Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 13th meeting of the Tiberton Planning Board. I'm going to start by taking attendance of Land use board members Anne Lawton.
Here.
Bill Kerlack.
Present.
Jim Stone.
Here.
Richard Taylor.
Here.
Rosemary Eva.
Present.
Stuart Harden.
Present.
Steve Clark.
Present.
And V.A. Lopez's accent. Also with us this evening, we have our land use legal counsel Todd Ramon. Sitting with us tonight is Sue Mara of Weston and Sampson, who is our consulting planner for this application. We also have Edward Tella, our land use clerk, Ashley Sweet, who is our particular consultant planner. This evening, we have in front of us one application. It's a major land development master plan review for comprehensive permit. This is a public hearing that's been continued from March the 4th. The development is vital at Tiberton Commons. It's a proposed residential community of 256 apartment-style buildings, 64 of which will be affordable with shared amenities. It's located on Souza Road, Platte 110, Lot 102, and Platte 301, Lot 21. The zoning district is R-40. This evening, we will be having a discussion on the major land development for master plan review. The time clock for the planning board to make a decision on master plan is April the 6th, 2025. Before I begin and ask Mr. Mancini to introduce his, the rest of his team tonight, I know there's a great deal of interest in comprehensive permits in the town of Tiberton. So this, in fact, is a comprehensive permit application. So for the benefit of those who are first-time visitors at the planning board or those watching on television at home, I'd like to tell you just a little bit about how a comprehensive permit works because it is distinct and different from a typical subdivision application. The comprehensive permit process and requirements are set forth in Roman General Laws, Section 4553. The ability to apply for a comprehensive permit was created by the General Assembly. It was created by the state to provide developers an incentive to construct affordable housing. In exchange for agreeing to building that affordable housing, the state has exempted the developer from certain local ordinances and has also granted them the ability to build additional bonus units above and beyond what the normal density would be required in that particular zone. As part of this, the state has also limited the municipality can deny a comprehensive permit process if they have not reached the desired goal of 10% of your housing being affordable. It's important to know that everyone in Tiberton, we believe, recognizes the importance of affordable housing for the people who live here, want to be able to stay here, for retired, be able to downsize. So no one, no one doesn't need affordable housing, but it is a balance. We want you to know that the laws require that the burden of proof is on the applicant to prove that they meet the standards that are required under the law. And we want you to know that your planning board, who is here representing you, who is the citizens of this community, will strictly hold them to the burden of proof as each element of review requires. Now that that's out of the way, I'd like to ask Mr. Mancini to introduce himself for the benefit of everybody, and if you could also introduce the rest of your team.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be here, and most importantly, thank you for scheduling a special meeting to allow us to give you the information that we need. And I appreciate that the chairwoman has given a sense of why, of the permit process and the application before you. This applicant has presented to the town what is denoted as a comprehensive permit application pursuant to Roman General Laws 4553-3. And it's a different and unique in the sense that the property, although certain zoning regulations and comprehensive items are associated with it, state statute allows an applicant to seek variances and to ask for certain things that would not normally be sought from an applicant, especially a property that's located in this particular zone. I know that sometimes that's head scratching for communities and for residents and for boards themselves, but it is a process that is sanctioned by the state and one that has particular criteria set forth in our board, in our application. And our job is essentially to show this board, demonstrate to this board that we do meet those requirements. And to do that this evening, we've assembled a group of professionals, many who have seen them in the past, that have been working with us from inception. This is a project that has not just been put together, had been submitted to the town in the last few months. This is something that's been in the works for almost a year and a half. It's been seen by this board previously. It's been submitted to this town stairs previously, and it's going through several different changes and renditions and through a specific process, beginning with the pre-application meeting, followed up with our submission for master plan, and then finally, our last hearing on March 4th, we've also gone to TRC. So there's been some significant deliberation that's been put into this project by both the town and the applicant, most significant of which has been the applicant's adoption of the conservation ordinance and the proposal for open space on this property, something that's not required of the state statute, but something that the developer saw as a need for the town and a request by the town, so we've implemented that. With me, I have Molly Titus from Dupree Engineering. She has been the project engineer on this from the beginning, and we'll go through the plans, the density and location of utilities, and have an in-depth discussion regarding that. I also have Joe Lombardo, who submitted a report, and we'll talk about the economic impact this project has on the town of Tiberton, and specifically focus on children, the school age children population, and what happens, a significant concern and issue. We've also had Todd Brighton from Bryant Associates, who will discuss traffic relative to the project. And finally, Jay Glover, who is our project architect, who has also been on that project since its inception. We'll go through elevations and designs. What we want to talk about are the issues that this board has already addressed as concerns. So you will hear explicit and detailed information regarding school, regarding school education, regarding density, and most important, utilities, including water and sewer, traffic, our design, and then ultimately, our conservation proposal in open space. And while we present this information to the board, I also want to remind the board that we are at master plan stage. And as a result of being in the master plan stage, this project has not yet fully been engineered. We do not have the required state permits, specifically from Department of Environmental Management or DOT, both of which will be required before we can proceed to preliminary plan, as well as before we can go to construction. One of the other unique aspects of 4553 is that this General Assembly and/or the state has determined that applicant is not required to have all of its state permits until late in the game, very late, sometimes not until the issuance of the building permit, certainly by final, by final plan or the issuance of the building permit. We intend to proceed on our state permits soon after our master plan. Our intention at this point is not to wait the final plan, but I just wanted to make the board and the public aware of the fact that that is a significant change in the law. But we also understand that from our perspective and from the town's perspective, there needs to be a need to know that this project is feasible from an infrastructure standpoint, which includes not only water, sewer, or traffic, and also a determination of feasibility from an economic standpoint. So we're dedicated to doing that. I just want to give an overview. I know maybe you reviewed the plans and have seen the notes from the last meeting and also from TRC, but just so you understand the scope of the project, we are proposing 256 residential units in an area which is owned R-40. The amount of units, the type of units, is not permitted in the R-4 zoning, so we are requesting a variance from that, again, because the state statute permitted to do that. Of the 256 units, we are proposing 25% of those units are affordable units, and that's what makes this a comprehensive permit process. So 256 units, 64 of those units reflective of 25% will be affordable. The composition of the units will be spread over 10 residential buildings. The project also has with it an array of amenities. Those amenities will be exclusive to the development and not a public, or public destination. So we've incorporated a dog spawn. We've incorporated 16 single car garage units. Those are for the residents. We are also proposing a commercial use, which is a daycare facility that will be open to the public. And then there's a clubhouse, which again, will not be open to the public, but utilized for the residents. Part of this, as I indicated, was the adoption of the conservation ordinance that the town had recently enacted. As a result, we've dedicated approximately 28 acres for open space. We also have proposed to have a playground and oval, outlook prevailing, I guess we can call it. We have not determined exactly what vehicle we are going to use as far as how to provide this property, there's different mechanisms, one of which would be to deed it to the town or deed it to a conservation commission, or maintain ownership to it, but cover it with a conservation easement, which would maintain an open space perpetuity. Depending on which avenue we choose to do will also impact how the playground and the overlook will be utilized. If it goes to the town, then it would be something that would be dedicated to the town, meaning the playground and the overlook would be dedicated to the town, both by us but part of the community that would be utilized from the public and also utilized by the homeowners or the residents of this unit. So that can be worked out with town participation and town input as we go through the process and as we get preliminary. That's certainly not something that we need to address at master plan, but it's on, it's on the plans, and it's something that we'd like to have a discussion about. And finally, we are proposing adequate parking, about 400 and some odd spaces, and they've been laid out on the plans. But with that, if the board has any specifics about the process or the variances that we're asking, what I'd like to do is just essentially have our first person testify and provide you with information, and I'll turn it over to Molly from Dupree, who can walk you through the comments that she's received. We now have the benefit of some of the town's comments, TRC comments, past comments made by the planning board and also residents, so that will give us an opportunity to go through that. And one final note, we know that the clock on this, if you will, is April 6th, so we appreciate providing you a lot of information. We, well, she said, we appreciate the fact that we've provided you a lot of information, and we don't see that we're going to be providing any additional information. The bulk of everything that you have now is everything that we are going to produce at this point for master plan. We would be hopeful, maybe very hopeful, that the bulk can take tonight, but we also understand that if it's not something we can do tonight because you need to address some issues or really digest the information, we're just hoping we can come back at the next meeting on April 1st so that we can meet the deadline of the 6th. But we'll let that go as, as the night progresses and if you need more info, we'll certainly address whatever concerns you have, whatever additional information you think you need. So with that, without further ado, I'll turn it over to...
Just one second. Yeah. John, I just want to take care of one housekeeping issue that we discussed prior to the meeting tonight. Both Anne Lawton and Rosemary Eva were not present at the last meeting. We've agreed that they can view that YouTube video, review all the documents that have been provided, sign an affidavit that they've done that, and that they can be voting members, correct?
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have any objection to that. And we have also transcribed the past meetings, so I can actually provide your transcript, and if that makes it easier as well.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, and we'll have a transcript of this evening as well.
Thank you very much. Molly, can I have your very short hand for us? Do you swear a firm testimony you shall give to this board? This matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and that this is your solemn affirmation?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. Molly Titus from Dupree Engineering. Up on the screen is the current site plan. So my intent for this evening was to kind of bring up both.
Not all the lights.
Too much.
Yeah, just the first one.
All right.
No.
No, neither. Yeah, that good?
That's good.
All right. Okay. That one off, just that one you got.
Those are good, they're not that good. So I was going to go through the Weston and Sampson staff report, which all of you have as part of the previous review. Beginning on page nine of that memo was kind of some items that we were asked to address as part of this recent mission. So item one within that area was the density calculation, and it read that the applicant needs to provide a simple density calculation, the detailed account of what and how much money has been included in the unsuitable land. I had worked with Susan on this this past week. We were hoping to have more time to review, but we've agreed this is at least a clip. So within the plans that you have, there's a calculation detailing the State of Rhode Island's definition of unsuitable land, and a calculation detailing what the town of Tiberton uses as unsuitable land. So to kind of summarize where we came with density, our total allowed lots did not change. Using the State of Rhode Island definition, we have a total lot area of 62.58 acres. The state requires us to remove wetlands, wetland buffers, drainage ponds and infrastructure, and roads, yielding us a total unsuitable land of 15.5 acres. So this is a state requirement. So under the state statute, we have total unsuitable land remating of 47.03 acres. Using the town's definition, we created the yield plan, which was provided as part of the set. We used appropriate roadway, right-of-ways, the zoning for R-40, and came up with 33 lots. Using that, we add those 33 lots to what you're allowed to use under the state's density calculation. So with 47.03 acres of suitable land, based on the state's definition, and a five-unit per acre bonus for lots that are serviced by both water and sewer, we get a bonus density of 235 units. When you add these to the 33 units from the yield plan, we come up with an allowable total number of units of 268. Our total proposed units at this time are 256, so we are below the minimum of the state's standard. So if you read through the code, it actually states that the minimum bonus is five units per acre. The second part of the calculation was open space. So this is where I reverted to the town's definition of unsuitable land. So under the town's definition, we have a total lot area of 62.58 acres. The town removes wetlands, I remove the stormwater ponds, I remove road area, and I am yielding a developable area of 50.35 acres. The town does not exclude counting wet buffers, which is why we had two different calculations of unsuitable land. So I tell you this because while we didn't use town's unsuitable for doing density of units, it's calculated for open space, which is why we had unsuitable for town regulations as well. So 50% of the open space would require us, of the 50.35 acres, would require 25.18 acres of open space for this project. On the site plan before you, one of the questions raised within the memo was counting of unsuitable land within the open space, and it's the purple shade that's on this. We counted a portion of the 75-foot no-cut buffer, the tree dairs, we did not include the pond. But just in effort to kind of detail, I did not count towards the open space calculation as detailed in the conservation ordinance. It was very specific as to what we could include as part of that calculation. There's any questions on density, or do you want to go on later?
You can go.
Okay. The next item on page, the bottom of page nine is water. And since our last meeting, we had a TRC meeting, and as part of that TRC meeting, Bob Ferrari from Northeast Water Solutions, which is the consultant for Stonebridge Water District, was virtually present at the meeting. He was on Zoom, and he is not available this evening. But also subsequent to that TRC meeting, he provided an additional memo summarizing the fire flow calculations, the water testing that was done, and the conclusions that Northeast Water Solutions made within this memo, which was submitted earlier, regarding their ability to service this development, that they have capacity, and that we will need a fire booster pump to meet fire flow demand, and that when the time comes during preliminary plan, that that would be designed and will meet all the necessary requirements. At this time, we are showing a water connection, leaving the westerly portion of the site and traversing down Souza Road where the water, existing waterway terminates, which is about 200 feet from a corner of Main. Beyond that, during the TRC, you know, we had some active dialogue with the fire chief and everything about what his requirements will be, and it's in here at this point. So everyone feels comfortable that we can get there with the information that we have, that it can be designed and successfully work for the project.
Before you continue, Molly, I'd like to ask you a question. My understanding was out of the technical review committee, there was an agreement that there would be a hydraulic model for this project?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. It'll be needed to design the system. And then separately, that Northeast Water Solutions and concurrently with Stonebridge, they're going to be doing their own system-wide modeling of their infrastructure. So those two models will speak to each other, and it'll be a much more comprehensive analysis.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that ultimately, the decision that Stonebridge will be making a decision based on hydraulic modeling.
Yeah, and at TRC, we also spoke about the fact that we're not opposed to it, that being a condition. And one of the things that we need clear is that obviously this project, and your fire chief made clear that we'd have to review this project per the regs, and they would have to meet the regs, and there's a specific requirement per each hydrant, and that would have to be modeled and demonstrated to his satisfaction and prove satisfactory that it meets the regs. So we're confident that we can do there. I mean, the important thing is at this stage of the game, we feel confident that we have appropriate pathway for water and for all the other utilities, most including sewer. So it's going to be a preliminary plan that will test that pathway as to whether it's successful or not, and we'll do that scientifically.
Could I just ask a clarifying question? So two questions here, Stonebridge hydraulic model, do we have a tentative timing for that? And number two, will that modeling consider other developments in the neighborhood? So it's more comprehensive and not just specific to this application?
So Stonebridge's model that they're going to run is going to be their entire water network, their entire system.
Okay.
We will perform a hydraulic model that will analyze our connection points and everything that can be provided within the site. But yes, it'll take into account what is going on within the existing system.
And then those two models will need to reconcile.
Yes.
I think you should clarify when you're going to have that hydraulic model. Hasn't been explicitly stated, or what stage of review?
Yeah, so our understanding is that Stonebridge has started that process, so I don't know when they intend to complete that process, but we will have that before final plan. I don't think we're required to have it at preliminary. We can certainly try to have it at preliminary, but we will be required, I believe, to have it by finals. Remember, the project doesn't get approved without it, so whether it's at preliminary or final or building permit, it's still an obligation that will be met by us. But we don't want to, we want to make sure there's enough adequate time for Stonebridge to finish what they're proposing so that our model can reconcile with that, and if there's any deficiencies or, say, inconsistencies, that they're appropriately addressed.
So just one quick comment, if I may. North Tiberton Fire District also has a model already up and running, and I think they've recently updated it. North Tiberton Fire District is the water authority for the northern part of the town, and they get 50% of their water from Stonebridge through an interconnection, and they would like to take even more because the other 50% comes from Fall River, and Fall River charges a premium. And that's why us folks who sadly live in the North Tiberton Fire District pay the second highest rates for water in the state of Rhode Island, second only to Shoreham. So what I'm getting around to asking is, is there any way we could also factor in the North Tiberton Fire District model into this equation? Because North Tiberton will be supplying water to several other projects in the immediate neighborhood, just on the other side of Souza Road. So then we'll have, we'll have a model that will represent both of the two small water districts in North Tiberton together.
So based on our understanding of Robert Ferry's comments to TRC, it seems that both North Tiberton and Stonebridge have the same engineer, par engineering, who's preparing the hydraulic, hydraulic model. So it makes sense that they will be speaking to one another, hopefully, but for us and for this project, our focus is on this, and so our model is going to be predicated upon what we're proposing in conjunction to the entity that we're receiving the water from, which would be Stonebridge. So we're going to plug into Stonebridge, and since we're plugging in there, we want to make sure that their model coincides with our model, and that we have adequate order here without impacting what they, what they do now and what they intend on doing in the future. And that's all going to be contingent on it. But that's not to say that your point's not well taken, that there should be understanding that, or communication between the right hand and the left hand.
That's all, Louis. Thank you.
If we're good with water, you can continue. If there's any other questions. The next item to address was the parking requirement for the site. We had a provided parking chart on the previous set of plans, but we neglected to have the required parking. Again, we have a, our plans show the local requirement. I know there is a lesser state requirement, but for this, I want to clarify, this is part of the town ordinance. We have 1.5 spaces for every unit, so that would yield 384 required parking spaces. The clubhouse would require 25 parking spaces, based on one space for 100-person occupancy. We have 29 required spaces for the daycare, which is one space for every 300 square feet of net leasable floor area. I used total building floor area to be conservative, but we're talking a couple spaces. No increased parking for the dog spa, that is not public, and so that would be rolled into residential parking. This yields required parking at 438 spaces, and we have provided 541 spaces. That includes 100 garage spaces. So there's 441 surface provided, 438 surface required, but then we have the 100 garage The last part of the memo on page 12, there were some items that were not addressed on the plans, and I just want to speak to them quickly. One item is snow storage. We haven't specifically demonstrated or calculated snow storage, but on this site plan, we have a lot of open space, a lot of concrete, and we have access to parking. Our preference is always to store snow on pavement because then the areas that are salted and sanded are collected, intruded prior to being discharged, so that would be how this will be handled. The second item was waste removal. We are not showing dumpsters. We do have one maintenance building, which is shown on this quarter of the site, and this client, the owner of I-Town, uses ventilation trash service. So residents will only be required to remove their trash from their individual units, and it will be collected nightly. It's typically Monday, Sunday through Thursday, so they will just put their trash in their hallways, and it's collected and brought to that communal maintenance building for disposal. Another item is the school bus stop. That will be located at the central entranceway, and will obviously be considered, taking into consideration site distances, and that the school systems have something different. This location would be our preference. And then the last item is fire suppression. I know we've talked about water a lot, but these buildings will be sprinkled based on refrained construction that are required to be, so it will reduce overall fire flow demand, increase safety, and so the intent is to sprinkle all these buildings. sprinkle all these buildings. From the comment memo, that is all that I have to address. I don't know if there's anything else you'd like me to go through on the site plan or if you want to hear the rest of the testimony. Obviously, I'm not going anywhere, actually.
Any additional questions from Molly at this point?
Actually, just, I'm sorry, just administratively, which memo are we referring to here? I'm desperately trying to figure it out.
I'm sorry, the Western Slams and Staff memo that was provided prior to hearing.
Thank you.
We have more, a little bit, if you will, if you can bring it.
So from the, from the site plan, what I'd like to do is move over to Joe Lombardo. And has he testified relative to his report and his findings? No? Have him sworn in at this point.
Mr. Lombardo, right hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you shall give to this board and this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, that this is your solemn affirmation?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you start, Joe.
Before you start. So before Mr. Lombardo starts, I just want to ask him to provide to the board, well, I'm just going to ask him a few questions just to lay the background of him going to report through the chair, if that's fine. So, Mr. Lombardo, can you just provide us and me with your essential resume, education, work experience, and current position?
Yes. Good evening, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be back in Tiverton this evening to see some familiar faces. For the record, as John suggested, I provide you, I do have my master's degree in community planning from URI. I've been working in planning for over 40 years. I've been a planner in Westerly, Richmond, and Hopkins, and also over in Rockland, Connecticut. I've primarily been doing planning and land use consulting since 1980 and these types of studies, both for comprehensive plans and for fiscal impact studies that I'm also doing now for that same area.
Joe, can you describe to the board what you've been asked to do and what that scope of work entails?
Yes. Basically, what we try to do, as the board knows, this is a checklist item from Master Plan to have an opportunity to evaluate the number of people that might live at this project, the number of school-aged children that might be the portion of that population. And we also expand that into projecting tax revenue to the community and also attempting to estimate the expenses to the community for having this project in the town. I will tell you, and I think both your town attorney and Mr. Mancini will explain to you, me be, but this is an informational part of the project. It is not a criteria that you'll see in your approval for disapproval of a project that has been tested, I think, for it. But it is, this is good information for you to understand what it is when any type of project committed to the community, what it means to you. So with that, John, if you want, I'll just give you a brief summary of what we submitted, how I did it, and what came up to results. The real basic part of this exercise is to come up with what I call multipliers. How many people per unit, how many school-aged children, based on the type of housing that being proposed. We look at tax revenue, we look at the chair, your current town budget, we look at census data, we use Housing Works RI for other information. So I try to make sure that I reference everything in my report and where I'm getting these numbers from and how I'm using them. So the first and most important thing to do is to estimate the number of people that will occupy. And when I use our multipliers based on the type of housing, when I say type, I mean, this is multifamily homes, and it's also bedroom count dictates the number of people that might occupy. It also dictates the type of attraction or preference for families that may have children to come and live here. So if you look, I have several different multipliers. One for what I call the one-bedroom units, which is 1.5 persons per unit. For the two-bedroom units, I use 2.07, which in essence is seven school-aged children per 100 units. And then for the three-bedroom units, you'll see 2.60, which is 60 school-aged children per 100 units. So there's a big jump, obviously, when you get into a three-bedroom unit. The other part, you'll see in here, there's a lot of studies that I've done myself over the past, and there's also a number of other studies of other states in the Northeast. And there's also some more recent experiences with other multifamily developers in Rhode Island, and they've given statistics and presented to other communities, and that's also included in our report. So those, those calculators, those school-aged children are based on experience with other civil-type projects in Rhode Island and the Northeast. So those are going to generate the numbers of people that will live in the project, and I estimated that at 528. Now, the school-aged children, as I said, the one-bedroom is showing no school-aged children, then there's the two-bedroom and the three-bedroom. Combination of those two, I estimate it would be 40 school-aged children. Now, I'm using that throughout the, throughout the report as a number, but I also feel, and I put some additional verbiage in the report, and this is not something that's quantitative, this is more from experience. I was a real estate agent for 20 years in Rhode Island, Connecticut. When you look at the type of housing being built, what's the attraction or not for families with children to occupy those units? And so I've also shown an example in here that there was 30 school-aged children versus 40, and we can see the impact on what that does to the population. But again, this is information for you to look at and understand it, and that in any given year, the number of school-aged children can vary. Some of these parents may choose to send their children to private schools. So you never, this is again, this is school-aged children, not necessarily public school-aged To, to look at the revenue, we've worked with the tax assessor in the past to try to come up with a way that they might evaluate this project. And you'll see in here that there's an average assessed value for this entire project of $75 million. Now, that's, that's not necessarily what it might cost to construct the project, but that's the price or the value that the assessor will look at this entire project, all the buildings, all the improvements, and come up with the numbers. So we use that by your current tax rate, and you can see it generates over $800,000 in property tax. This is as if it was all built today, today's tax rate and today's assessment. When you look at on the expense side, again, as I said, we need to come up with these multipliers per person and per student. And I use your municipal budget, and I also use your school budget, and the school budget is minus or the net number minus the state aid that you get. And you'll see that it costs on average $838 per resident for all your municipal services and $18,721 for your school-aged children, which is expensive. There's no other way to put that. So we use those numbers, and I also take a look at that municipal budget because this is a private development versus a single-family home development, which would have public roads. I've lowered that 25% to give a multiplier of $630 per person living here. So when we compare those and we calculate those out, we show an expense to the community of just over $1 million for both the school-aged children, which is 40, and $332,000 for municipal. I note in my report that if there were 30 school-aged children here, that would be reduced expense by $187,000. And I'll explain to you what that means from conclusions. When we compare the cost to the revenue, it's showing an additional cost to the community of $250,000. If there are less students, which I think it would be in this, in this case, and I think maybe even the developer could talk to you a little bit about what they anticipate here as tenants, it would be closer to a $60,000 shortfall. So it makes a big difference, I understand, and there's a definite concern, but the way I would look at it is if you had 30 or 40 students, they'd be equally distributed between your elementary and middle schools and your high schools. So it could be 10 to 15 students in any one of those categories of your schools presently, if this was all here today and it was fully occupied. I'd be happy to explain any of the information that I've included in the addendums. I think it really helps if you, when you have some time to look at that. If you have further questions, as John pointed out, we may be coming back to you, I don't know. But if you generate questions, I can certainly respond to them in writing or in person. But in essence, this is what it means to the community in dollars and cents and in people. And that factors into the water studies you're doing, how many people are going to be using those, occupying those units. That factors into the traffic patterns, how many people are coming in and out. So it is an important number to look at, but it is informational for you, and I hope that gives you a picture of what this might mean to us here. Questions?
I had a question on page three, the table that you started going through.
Yes.
How did you get 230 units? 48, 48, and 160?
Right. That's incorrect. It's 256.
256. And the other thing, on page seven, it looks like we're using the per capita multipliers for West Greenwich. Down toward the bottom, let me scale that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I see that. No, it's definitely.
Plus, you're growing 76 kids in the incubator.
The incubator?
Or at the daycare center.
Oh. Well, those could be coming from anywhere, so.
Sure.
Well, that's a question, then. Go ahead, man.
No, the daycare center has, oh, sorry. Daycare center has the ability that, what is it, like 66 kids? So those kids are not, not necessarily limited to the kids in the development, is that right?
That's correct. It's open to the public.
Okay.
I have a question. I'm going to make a request that the appropriate contents of this report be forwarded to the superintendent's office in town. I just, I do not feel comfortable weighing in on sort of the impact to our schools that is not the purview of this board. I think it moves us to make sure that the school department in town has this information and has the ability to offer a comment on it.
I would like to reinforce that. I read your report. I thought it was very good, and I thought you made a very convincing case about the number, or at least the range, the 30 to 50 range of students. But, but it, but I think it's really important that we share this information with our school administration because we have other big projects coming down the road. And so again, looking at the bigger picture, because we are, after all, the Tiverton Planning Board, we have to look at everything that's going on in town. I think it would be really good to, to encourage the school administration. And I think one other request I make is that we also send a copy to this, to the, to the school committee so that they are aware of what's coming down the pipe. Not that we, not that we question the figures, but just that they, they get the information. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. If I may, we don't have an objection. Clearly, we'll share this information with whomever you think is necessary. And obviously, the school superintendent and whomever is associated with the school, whether it's the school committee or whoever makes these types of decisions, should be entitled to this information and should receive it. I think it's helpful, as you said, Mr. Hardy, to plan or to have the talent, put this into their global analysis, if you will, and make the decisions as they need to make relative to budgets and relative to paying for school-aged children. But I just want to make sure that the board, remind the board that determination of school-aged children or economic impact is not a crong of approval, if you will. So in other words, when you're looking at the enactment or the enforcement of the subdivision regulations vis-à-vis 4553, this information is educational, it's helpful, but it's not a prerequisite and not a means by which an application can or should be denied. So we'll provide whatever information necessary because we think it's important for both the applicant, so that the applicant's doing its planning, and for the municipalities who is doing its planning as a true along the way. Because, you know, that's what municipalities do. Municipalities are in the business of housing people, educating children in properly planning and being physi-, not physically, but fiscally, mentally prepared for its future growth and future development. And that's why we provide this information, that's why many municipalities ask for it. We've done it. Mr. Lombardo is one of the few experts in that area, so we'll submit it to you.
So just to be clear in my comments, I'm well aware that that's not a deciding factor.
I'm not saying that.
I just want to be clear there. And my ask is for Ed to forward this, not you.
Yeah, no, I.
Because I want to make sure we're just doing.
Just so I'm clear, I'm not saying that you're making any comments that you shouldn't or that this shouldn't be provided. I'm just, for the record, making it clear that the applicant will provide any additional information that anybody would have relative to this issue. But I think the record also, and the public also, should be aware that this is not to be utilized as a sword to try to pierce the project. It doesn't work that way. But we're here to give you all the information you need because you're entitled to it as a municipality to properly plan for the growth of your township. That that's what we're doing here, and that's our job too, with participants in the process.
The only comment that I'd like to make, and I understand it, and I'm sure Mr. Lombardo understands this, is that this kind of monitoring is extremely difficult to do. I will say that my experience working on the last update of the Tiverton Community Comprehensive Plan, one of the tasks that I was assigned was to look at the comprehensive permit and affordable housing developments we have done in the community and the original estimate for the number of schoolchildren, and then actually see what the actual number looked like. And in fact, again, this is very difficult to, to do because no one has really a crystal ball, but in every case, there were in fact significantly more schoolchildren than had been originally proposed. So while, as you said, and we are very clear on the law, that this information cannot be used as a reason to deny a project, I think when we share this, we also have to remind those that we may share it with in the community that this is only an estimate and the numbers may in fact be higher.
I'll just add one last thing to the project. Education, there's a lot of good information that I use from the Rhode Island Department of Education. It has enrollment data, and you can plug it every year so you can see what your enrollment's been doing. I think, you know, I did this report a year ago, it's gone down 40 students in a year.
It's declining.
And there's also, I think they also have projections as well. So you can, and I'm sure that the superintendent will do with this information, if your planning staff send it to them, they should be able to give you that as well so that you understand the context of what may or may not be the impact of having this here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lombardo. Thank you. So as part of our application, we had also submitted a traffic impact analysis. We submitted it back to our original submission in October of 2023, and then followed up again in November of 2024. We've updated that analysis with my letter, but still provided, completed by Todd Brayton from Brayton Associates. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Brayton to just testify to that report. I just ask that he be sworn in as well.
Mr. Brayton, I pray that you may, sir. Do you swear affirm that the testimony you shall give to this board and this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, that this is your solemn affirmation?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Can I just go and just do a little spell of that?
Sure. Todd Brayton, B-R-A-Y-T-O-N. Todd, can you, for the board, just give us a quick rendition of your work experience, educational background, scope of work in the report that you prepared?
Yes. So I have a bachelor's of science degree in civil and environmental engineering from the University of Rhode Island. I also have a master's degree in civil and environmental engineering with a concentration in transportation engineering from the University of Rhode Island. I have over 25 years' experience working on projects such as these, and I am a registered professional engineer in the state of Rhode Island. So just a kind of big little background on the project. So we did our traffic study, I think John said about, yeah, October twenty twenty-three. So there had been some changes to the plan, so I'll get to that a little bit. But the traffic study was based on a previous plan, but I will then get into some of those differences. So originally, the traffic study was based on two hundred and thirty-two single-family units, which also included a larger component of commercial space. In addition to a daycare, there's also potential for a coffee shop or a convenience store, so we had included that in our traffic study. The car development is two hundred and fifty-six apartment units. And also, the daycare is a little bit larger than it was in the original study. It is now, I think, seventy-seven hundred square feet versus sixty-five hundred square feet in the actual traffic study. So our study area for the project includes Susa Road, which is an urban-minded collector. We looked at the unsignaled intersection of Main Road, Susa Road, and Schooner Drive, which is to the northwest of the site, and also the intersection of Fish Road and Susa Road, which is towards the northeast of the site, at the surrender, Susa Road. Traffic movement counts were used actually from a previous project. They were taken on Thursday, December tenth, twenty fifteen. They were taken between the hours of six and ten a.m. in the morning and two and six p.m. in the afternoon. For the study, we did a field review to look at the area on August thirty versus two thousand and twenty-three, looking at the existing stop and site distances, locations of interest utilities, poses speed limits, traffic control bases, items such as that. We also collected speed data again from a previous study, again, on December tenth, two thousand and fifteen, on Susa Road. So that the daily traffic in Susa Road is about two thousand vehicles per day, which is a relatively minor number. So in terms of looking at how much traffic this development would generate, in our original traffic study, and we used those uses that I mentioned earlier. And I won't give you too much detail because it's a little different now, but we had looked at something that's called internal trip capture. So when there's multiple uses, there's going to be trips between those uses on-site that don't leave the site, so they don't actually go off onto the roadways in the state of Susa Road or the main road in Fish Road. But now that is actually more of a, it's not quite a good mixed view, so that component really kind of goes away. And there's also another thing that we had looked at in the original traffic study called pass-by trips, which for some uses, especially the coffee shops, convenience stores, is going to be trips that are in the area that are passing by, they'll be there anyway, and they're just going to be coming in. Again, in this case with more of just residential and daycare, not for that.
I'm sorry, in this case what?
In this case with just residential and a daycare. Good people have to pass by. But in general, I just want to kind of give a quick comparison. So compared, our initial trip generation for that site, which though is assumptions, compared to what the currently, current development consists of, is actually a significant decrease in traffic that's expected from the development. So since the census were taken in twenty fifteen, we expanded those counts to anticipate the build-out year of twenty twenty-eight using growth rates from Rhode Island statewide planning programs, Rhode Island statewide model update, which is also known as Technical Paper One Sixty-Six. So we did that from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-eight. I do want to point out that with the pandemic, COVID nineteen, there actually was a significant decrease in traffic after that time, which is now, like about five years later, gets getting back to what those volumes were before that time. So our growth rate, or the growth rates that the state has are probably conservative because of that fact. So in terms of the capacity of the roadway network, we used the Highway Capacity Manual, which is the industry standard. We use software called CPRO, which is a common program of use to determine capacity. And the concept of level service is based on, it's a qualitative measure which describes operational conditions of traffic, in this case based on delay at the intersections, which is seconds per vehicle. And it ranges from level service of A, which is most favorable conditions, to level service of F, which are least favorable. So we looked at the AM and PM peak hours, which are the most critical periods for operations, and they have the highest capacity requirements. We looked at the future no-build conditions, and then we looked at future build conditions to see what the impact would be from this development. And we did that for the two intersections I mentioned earlier, Main, Susa, and Schooner Drive, and Fish Road and Susa Road, as well as the two proposed driveways. And based on our analysis, under future build conditions, the proposed driveways would operate at level service of B or better for both AM and PM peak hours. For the intersection of Main Road, Susa Road, and Schooner Drive, the level of service would not change from future no-build to future build conditions with the exception of the eastbound and westbound approaches during the AM peak hour, which would actually change from level service C to level service D for the eastbound, and level service C to a level service E for the westbound approach. And do want to point out that the eastbound and westbound approaches of the intersection in the PM peak hour, although they don't change, they are at future no-build and future build level service F. And then at the intersection of Fish Road and Susa Road, there would be no change in the level service from future build to future no-build with the exception of the eastbound approach during the AM peak, which changes from level service C to level service D. So we also looked at, as part of our statement, also looked at the site distance at the driveways. And I do want to point out that, again, with the change in the plan from what we looked at back in twenty twenty-three to now, there was a shift in the driving location. So we do recommend that we look at that again, just to make sure. But the driveways that were shown in the plan was adequate site distance based on the speed that was collected, which showed eighty-fifth percentile of speed versus speeds that are used to determine design speed. It's forty miles per hour eastbound and forty-two miles per hour westbound. And that requires a minimum safe stop and site distance of three hundred and sixty feet, which was met at both driveways in both directions. It is recommended, because there is some vegetation along the end of the road, that that be cut back just to ensure that the site distance is met once, or if the traffic goes forward and the drivers are distracted. And it's also recommended because there are some differences on Susa Road on the south side of the road, where the drivers would be, that that just be taken into account during the design of the project to ensure that set lines are not blocked and are at good. So based upon our analysis, traffic operations on the surrounding roadways and intersections will experience minimal change with the addition of the traffic generated by the proposed development.
Todd, can you just explain a little bit your conclusion you said would be minimal change? How does that correlate with or coincide with the level services you just previously described to us?
Yeah, so like I said, there's only going to be minimal change in the level of service. So specifically, it's only going to be one or two letter changes at those main intersections, and it's only for one peak hours at each one.
Based on your experience and based on the technical information that you rely upon, is that consistent with this type of increase in development or the size of the development?
I guess I would say that's pretty typical.
So this, your traffic counts were done in twenty fifteen, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so you mentioned something about how you tried to project out in time. Could you talk about that a little bit more?
Yeah, so. So the statewide planning has a document that kind of gives information on what's projected increase in traffic would be. So in this case, we looked at the specific roadway type collector in Newport County. And based on that, there's, it actually looks like five-year increments. So we looked at twenty fifteen to twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, and then twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-eight, which are anticipated build-out years. So based on that, we come up with an increase in the background traffic, and I think it's somewhere around thirty percent or so. Or sorry, point three percent per year, so over thirteen years. I don't know exactly what that would be, but it's, it does give a larger traffic than what the actual project. And we use that, those volumes in our analysis.
That was actually one of my questions, Mr. Brayton, you want to see it again? So in the PMP gower, although we are not changing letter grade here, I just, I noted that on the Main Road, Susa Road, Schooner Drive, when we're talking westbound approach, it goes from a future no-build of fifty-one point eight seconds to a future build of two hundred and thirteen point four seconds, which is like a greater than, you know, four times. Can you just clarify, I was trying to like do it in my head, like where, what do we mean by the westbound approach right there?
So the westbound approach is the Susa Road approach approaching Main Road?
Susa, into Main?
Into Main, right.
Okay.
And just to give a little more information about that, there are some limitations in the software and modeling for any analysis. But for this, what happens is when you get to near capacity, the delays actually increase almost exponentially. So it's not really quite accurate, but that's what the numbers show. So you would expect some increase with that, but maybe not to that level. And then, again, also to get back to what I said earlier, the transition now on the, is in the currents, is much lower than what we had analyzed. So it's likely that that increase is going to be much lower as well.
Okay. And would it be in your professional opinion that, because there is no traffic light right there right now, could the impact of that be mitigated through the installation of better sort of traffic infrastructure there, like a light?
So as some of you are aware, we did do the traffic study across Susa Road for, I think it's now called Pacific Asset Reserve. And as part of that study that was sent to nineteen, for their review, they had actually asked us to do a warrant analysis, a traffic duty warrant analysis to see if the signal was warranted at that time, and it was not. And actually, it wasn't, it was, I would say it wasn't close, but it didn't make any warrants.
Okay.
So with this added traffic, it would probably get closer. And it was part of the Pacific Asset Reserve, and I don't know exactly how it got worked out in terms of kind of details. But there is supposed to be some kind of a monitoring program in place so that when traffic is increasing, that it would actually, if it does trigger the need for a traffic signal, that it can be installed. It is a state road, both Susa and Main Road, so we'd have to go through RIDE to get that put in place. So to assess the traffic speed, obviously, would make it easier to get them out of Susa Road and it's going to, it would increase delays a little bit for Main Road traffic. So it's hard to say, potentially, it could be some of that would be required in the future.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Brayton, your study does not include the Pacific Asset Reserve, is that correct?
No, actually, I have to mention that it does include the Pacific Asset Reserve. Yes, I apologize for not mentioning that.
Does your study include any other developments or proposed developments in the area?
So in this case, it does not, just because we looked at, again, we had done the traffic study previously, and the amount of traffic from this development and the Pacific Asset Reserve, even though they're relatively low, they're still at a much higher level than the other developments. And in our increase using the background rule, I think we'd cover the other developments in the area.
Okay, just to be clear, it would not include, for example, a gas station at the corner of Susa and Main with a convenience store and a drive-through?
It does not include that.
Okay. Thank you.
It did not include the Trilogy property where Oxford Development, across the road.
I'm not familiar with that one, but if you guys.
That's just down between the gas station and the Pacific Asset. There's another confidence at home.
So that one, I was unaware of, so it does not include that.
Thanks, I just wanted to say that we received the study on Friday, and we're still reviewing it, so we don't have any technical comments for it yet.
Thank you, Sue. So Todd, I just had a quick question about the level of service. I believe that the level of service is actually determined or calculated by the American Association of State Highway Traffic Officials, Transportation, Highway and Transportation Officials, is that correct? Is it ASHTO?
It's related to ASHTO, it's actually Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Oh, okay.
But, yes.
And as you mentioned earlier, it is a subjective evaluation based on delay primarily, and anxiety on the part of motor vehicle operators too, is part of it. Do you happen to know the definition of LOSF? Because that is the assignment now, now, given to the intersection of Main Road, Susa Road, and Schooner Drive. So that has the, the level of service goes from A to F. F is the least desirable. Do you happen to have the definition of that?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but what you said, it is the worst condition. It's where the intersection is exceeding capacity.
And that's the situation today without the build-out of the Pacific Asset Reserve, without the build-out of, without the build-out of Susa Road condominiums, without the gas station. Again, you know, I think Bill makes a very good point that a traffic light would go a long way to mitigate in that situation. But I just wanted to say that that intersection is problematical right now, let alone in the future. The other thing I just wanted to say quickly, and this may not be within your, within your area of responsibility, Todd, but it is a circulation safety and convenience issue. And that is pedestrians. We'll have, as Mr. Lombardi pointed out, between thirty and fifty school kids. We'll also have grownups who will be on bicycles or on foot coming out of the development. They'll be coming onto Susa Road, which is a relatively narrow road where the stop distances aren't great because of the hill and where there are no shoulders, essential inertia. If you go east, there are shoulders of one foot, I think you calculated. But to the western portion of Susa Road, there are no shoulders whatsoever. I'm just asking, would it be possible to build a sidewalk along Susa Road, on your side of Susa Road, obviously, that would go perhaps from the intersection of Main and Susa up to the end of your property, up to about where Sid and Flesh Brook comes under Susa Road and where you butt with the, with the VD Auto Dealership? I know that's probably not for you to answer, or even Mr. Mancini, but it's something that I love to, I hope you can take back in ways with the developers to see if they would consider that. Because we're not only going to have kids on bikes and walking, but we're going to have grownups who walk every day. And I think, I think a sidewalk would be a great pedestrian amenity and also a safety change. So I'm just, maybe I should ask Mr. Mancini to take that back and see if we can factor that in, if the budget will allow you to factor that into the equation. Thank you.
Yeah, I was pretty naive, I assume, because the delivery of the traffic study was March the sixth, that it was through March the sixth rather than the earlier studies and things. Because we've had, VD is almost doubled in some.
Because we've had, VD is almost doubled in size down there at the choke line of the other one. I didn't see any mention of the parking lot, which during peak hours gets a lot of traffic exchange in, in both peak hours. On the other side, coming up Schooner Drive, you almost can't turn left out of Schooner Drive during those times, or on weekends. And we've got a restaurant down the foot of Schooner Drive, is looking at considerable expansion in size. You've always got seasons, should that go their way, build that drive-through. Now you've got to get all the people off of twenty-four to pick up a cup of coffee there and queue it up across that area. There's just a lot of things going on. There's two EV charging stations on Suzo now that should be pretty often used. And the last page is wrong. The drawing of the, of the development is an earlier rendition.
Right, yeah.
That doesn't represent what it is.
Yeah, I mentioned that a moment earlier, that it was based on, you know, an earlier rendition of the traffic.
I may have missed it. So the earlier plan had an exit onto Main Road.
There was an earlier plan to have a driveway on Main Road, but that was taken out before we completed our traffic study. So that is not included in our study, or I'm pretty sure it's not included in that plan that's in the, in the plan, that was taken out for quite a while.
Okay.
If I may, if I may, Chair. Todd, can you, can you tell us, is the analysis that you've conducted in the, in your report, is that consistent with industry standards within the realm of, of the performance of traffic studies?
Yes, it is.
Can you also describe for the board, what are the next steps that the applicant would need, and would that include a review by, around Department of Transportation? And will that require of you to do as well, in conjunction with that review?
Yes, so it, it is, because Suzo Road is a state road, it would require a physical alteration permit, application to be submitted to RIDOT and reviewed by RIDOT and either approved or denied. As part of that, they would require a traffic study which they would review. Like I said, which I mentioned earlier, when we were dealing with them on Pacific Reserve, is that they may have comments, and again, it's because of the chance, they might ask us to look at that intersection again to see if, if the signal was warranted. But it would be something that would go through that process before, an approval for the driveways is given for the.
And during the, in that process with RIDOT, and during that process, would you be required to update this report that you presented?
Most likely, we would have to update the, the report.
According, do you view this report as essentially a preliminary report to determine feasibility of the conceptual plan that's been presented? And the plan that you're referencing in your report, can you confirm that that's actually the plan that's before the board now?
Yes, well, I would say a preliminary, that's, that's a fair assessment. So the report, the plan that's in, in the study, in the last appendices, in this appendix E, so that report is not the current plan. But we did look at the plan, and we had, we had provided a supplemental letter just indicating just that, as I mentioned earlier, that the trip duration is significantly different, and that is a new driveway location that would have to get reviewed.
Excuse me, that would be the two alteration permits, correct? Two amendments?
It would be, it would be combined into one, one permit, but they would be two driveways. They would look at both at the same time, under one permit application.
Accordingly, is it your professional opinion that the plan as proposed now by the applicant before the board, less intense from a traffic perspective than the original plan proposed?
It's significantly less intense, yes.
And finally, at this stage of review, based upon the preliminary report that you've prepared, is it your professional opinion that the proposal, as submitted to the applicant, as submitted by the applicant to the board, would not have a significant negative impact on the health and safety of current or future residents of the community in areas, including but not limited to pedestrian circulation, as we've heard from the board, bicycler circulation and vehicle circulation?
Vehicle traffic.
Yes. Can you just give me a brief conclusion as to why you've come, can you give me a brief explanation as to why you've come to that conclusion?
So, so based on our analysis, I think we, we've indicated that the capacity is not significantly changed. It's, it's not changing any of the conditions of, of the existing roadways. And, and again, this would have to go through DOT review and approval or the development to get the physical alteration permit.
And in conjunction with your report, have you also had the opportunity to look at how emergency vehicle apparatus would be impacted or affected by this development?
So, so do you mean on the site? Or? Yeah, both. Let's start with on the site. So we have not looked at, so typically, and this may be something that Dupree has done, but typically, we would look at the site at, at IAS, it's more developed, to make sure that, that fire apparatus can navigate, but just pick that up. Again, we'd have to do that with a more thorough review. A piece, a, a quick review of the plan, I would say that it does allow for emergency access for, by fire trucks.
At, at this stage, at this stage with the conceptual plan, in your professional opinion, you don't see any evidence, do you?
No.
What's that based on?
In terms of?
Well, it's your opinion that the emergency vehicles would not have any opinion or any obstruction, I guess.
Yeah, so, so again, that's just based on a quick review of the plan. So like I said, we, we'd have to do a more thorough review to confirm that. And I, I don't know, Molly, if Dupree has done that yet?
Who's in the panel?
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so Mr. Ty, as well. She'll have to wait a minute later. Thank you.
But based upon your review, in your, in your professional opinion, you don't see any evidence?
That's correct.
So may, may I ask another question, Todd? Todd, I, I may have missed something in your report. Did you address the issue of school buses?
We did not, no, not, not directly.
In going forward, and as you look, look at this in more detail, and I understand that we're just at the master plan level, we're not at the preliminary plan, where we do the heavy duty engineering. But on going forward, we're, we're going to have school buses on Suzo Road, picking kids up in the morning and dropping them off. And when those school buses stop, they're going to block traffic, because as you know, Suzo is only, in some places, twenty feet wide. So we might have to do what we did at the Pacific Reserve across the street and figure out a way of getting the school buses off Suzo Road, so that when they pick up and drop off kids, they're not on the road at all, they're, they're actually, they have actually gone into the property. So you might want to think about that, because that is an issue, that's going to be an issue.
Can you just elaborate on your comment on how this plan is less intense from a traffic perspective than the prior one?
Yeah, so I had mentioned that earlier, but, so we had looked at the current use, the current use of, of showing the, the plan. And so that is based on the trip duration, so that current plan generates some, just primarily because there's no commercial uses anymore, there's no coffee shops or community stores that were contemplated earlier. And it's also the, a different type of residential unit before a single family, which generates more traffic than an apartment use, so that's.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Matt, last witness I have tonight is maybe Jay Grover, who's our architect.
Make your presentation how you want, but we're just talking about emergency vehicles. Doesn't make sense to address that right now.
No, because I'm going to bring Molly up at the end, and just go through a couple of final points.
Okay.
Yeah, unless, unless you want to.
It's okay, we can wait till the end.
Do I have to do it like that? Yeah.
There's a, well, right, right on the side.
Your name?
Jay Grover.
And you raise your hand, do you swear a testament, you shall give to this board that this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and that is your solemn declaration? Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, just give us your educational, professional background, the scope of work, and what you presented.
I have a bachelor's degree in architecture from Roger Williams University. I'm a registered architect in Rhode Island, and I have plenty of experience.
And what form are you in?
I'm with Corson Design Architecture.
Did you spell that?
Yes. C-O-R, D-E as in divoty, S-U-N.
Okay. We, we, I don't think we have any paperwork for you at all, unless I miss something.
They're on the plans, right? So that's what, I think that term, I think is on there.
Continue.
You want me to story answer that?
So just to give a quick overview of the apartment buildings again, there are ten of them, five each create a little courtyard. Eight of those are three stories, and two are four stories. The four-story ones are the bookends on either end. And we'll take a look at the three-story apartment building. The three stories have twelve two-bedrooms, six three-bedrooms, and six one-bedrooms in each building. The, we're using materials of shingles and clad boards, gable ends. Each unit has an inset balcony. You can see the floor plans there, and the elevations above them. And they are approximately twenty, oh, sorry, forty-three feet in height to the very top of the building.
Forty-three feet for the three-story?
Yes, from grade to the top of the, of the roof. There's a cross-section to get an idea of what that looks like.
All right, guys. I, I have to admit, when I saw all of this, I was a little bit confused as to what was actual renderings and what was samples.
Yep.
Is that a sample?
That was just a sample. The previous rendition had that, and there was no elevations, so it was just keeping that on there. But I could take it up. It was just, what was shown originally without the elevations is to give an idea of scale. And the four-story, these are the two buildings on either end are bookends, the four stories. These have thirty-two, each of them have thirty-two two-bedroom units. And again, each unit would have their own inset balcony. And we're using gable ends, we're using shingles, clad boards, board and batten, and kind of New England vernacular materials. And the overall height is fifty feet from grade to the top of the roof.
Do you have to show us the, these two?
I, I can go into the other buildings, whatever you guys would like to do.
Sure. I mean, I think if somebody's got a question, you know, let me, so otherwise you can.
There's the N elevation and a cross-section of what that building would look like. These are elevations and floor plans, or the floor plan of the clubhouse. The clubhouse is about forty-four hundred square feet, it's one story. And we have a tower element that's part of, as you come into the property down the tree-lined boulevard, this is your focal point at the end of it, so we're trying to highlight that with this tower.
And what is the height of the tower?
Thirty-eight feet from grade to the very top.
Just a question about the clubhouse. What is the intended use of the clubhouse from an amenities perspective?
Yeah, there's a fitness area, there's a, like a conference room that people can, you know, utilize, just open space with couches, kind of lounge space in the center there. And there's a mailroom where you can collect your mail. There's a front office, there's kind of, a whole quarter of it is kind of the rental offices, and there's some public bathrooms as well. Outside of the poolhouse for the clubhouse, there is a pool amenity, as well as some pickleball courts.
What is this that I'm looking at? Is that an elevated patio or?
No, it's a, yeah, it's an entrance to the clubhouse, so just a big covering.
So it's a gable roof, so that I'm looking at the loft?
Yeah, it's an open, open-air, kind of heavy timber entrance. There is some renderings that might help. There's a rendering of the front and across.
So will this be done with shingles and board and batten, or?
This is a, I remember clad boards, a stone base. And there's some board and batten as well, highlighted.
And from a location on the overall sort of development, is, is the clubhouse sort of in the middle?
Yeah, I'll bring up the master plan. So it's, it's right here.
Right there.
Yeah, so it's kind of the focal point when you come down this tree line and go over and go to the.
And that's intended to be the pool and the pickleball court behind it?
Yes, yeah. Essentially, they're.
Did you see that there's going to be a rental office there as well?
Yes.
Thought I missed a few.
I don't know. I'll go back to the standard, just so you can see. So I'll kind of, the rental offices are over here in the center, so it's kind of this quarter, so probably about a thousand square feet.
And that's.
And this is the, the daycare. The daycare is about seventy-seven hundred square feet, one story, an elevation using gables. There's a lot of floor to almost ceiling windows and doors for the classrooms. All the classrooms have a door going out to the outside for outdoor playground area. So you can see that.
And is the outdoor program area a fence?
It is a fence, yes. And here's a, a rendering of what that would look like.
And again, from a location on a global plan. And again, from a location on a global plan, where exactly is that?
So that's located here, about two hundred feet from Souza Setback.
And is that intending to be a separate entrance? Am I seeing that on Souza Road?
Yes, so it has a separate entrance and act as a emergency exit entrance for the directly as well. Before I go to the next one, the next one we'll be looking at is the concept kind of images of what this lookout and playground. This is the high point. You can see these dashed lines which are representing two-foot increments. So this is the high point of the site. And the idea would be that you could get a view right above the tree line, which, as you can imagine, would be pretty spectacular views with a playground below. And we'll show some inspiration images for those.
What would be the height?
It would be just high enough to be able to see over the trees. And I don't have a measurement. So here's, you know, inspiration image of what that would look like. At the base of it would be outdoor playground.
Do you have a ballpark idea of how far the playground you set back from funding residential properties along Main Road?
We'll go back one more, yeah. So here is the lookout and the homes along Main are here. And then you have the homes along Souza here. How far that is? Maybe taking a guess. Probably maybe around seven hundred feet from Souza.
And the playground is committed to as part of the project? Admittedly, in some of the documentation, like it was a little questionable. We're not putting it on the plan, so is that a committed-to feature?
And you have, you made some mention about the playground being accessible to the public other than?
Yeah, absolutely. So, to be clear, so the playground isn't committed to amenity. The question is whether this will be an amenity solely for the development or one to the public. And the reason why we say that is because we're not certain exactly what we're going, how we're going to accomplish the open space. If the open space is deeded to the town, then we'll deed it to the town with the playground and with the, with the tower. If the open space remains in the ownership of the, of the developer but subject to a conservation easement, then we'll, we'll have to figure that out from an, from an identity perspective, liability perspective. Because if the developer owns the real estate and someone should get hurt, then the developer becomes liable as opposed to if the developer deeds it to the Conservation Commission or to the town. So that's, that's a detail we don't know yet, but we're wanting to work and kind of figure that out.
Because the town will have similar issues around the main, as well as maintenance and access across a property that it doesn't own.
Exactly, yeah. So it, you know, it may be more headache than it's worth, but it's, it's an amenity that we'd like to share with the town, but we just need to figure out the best mechanism to do it.
Can I ask a question about the tower? Will it be visible? Any of public highways or homes? I just, I know there was a question at the TRC related to the historical history. The impact of having a tower that goes above the tree line?
I, I don't think it would be, just because when you're standing on Souza or Main, you have, you know, trees in front of you that will block that kind of angle with you. But that's something that we could kind of model, just to see, you know, what would you see from Souza or Main?
We can certainly, what we can do is do a balloon run, kind of run it and see how it, how it works. Without merit to the height of the tower, we can begin work with that. It's just an added amenity. We think, given the contours and the location, the fact that it's open space, and you anticipate the town has some walking trails through there that is going to be beneficial to the town and to the residents. So it's a nice added feature that we can do it. I'd like to do it if possible.
Is the site work still on the table?
Yeah, absolutely. I just, I'm not going to do it. My site work, I went on, I've got Lyme disease, so.
Where's an eye?
But yeah, as the weather gets better with our, and certainly we can make that a condition for preliminary plan.
And I'll leave you go, heck, why not?
I, I'd just like to say that I'm impressed with the design. I think, I think your, your shingle style with, with the gables is, you know, evokes sort of the southern coastal New England traditional architecture. So encouraging me to keep thinking in those terms. I, I'm just wondering if the height of buildings themselves would be any kind of an issue.
And I would, I would want our public safety departments to weigh in on that.
Exactly. I, I'm guessing that the height will not be an issue, but we'll, we'll hear from the public if they, if they live in the neighborhood and.
From a public safety standpoint, this was discussed at the TRC and the, and the fire, fire chief was there and he said that there had an issue with accessing the balloons at high. There may be other issues with the height that he's talking about, but as far as that public safety issue, he didn't, he didn't have a solution.
Okay, thank you. Jake, can you apply to that with respect to whether this building can be seen from Souza Road or from Main Road, given the topography of the existing property and the vegetation that remains part of the open space?
Which building?
All of them.
I'm just going to go back to the master plan. They are set about one hundred and seventy-five feet from Souza Road. And as you can see, you know, more than half, or half the value of the existing vegetation I would leave there. So those are all leafed out. It's going to be hard to see those, you know, buildings from Souza. I'm sure there'll be a.
So how about Main Road?
Yeah, for Main Road, you won't see them now. So for Main Road, you, this is really a pretty tall hill here that would block any of you from vision over to apartment business.
So like Mr. Hardy, I was pleased to see New England vernacular architecture, board and batten. I was a little alarmed by some of the drawings that we showed seemed to show multi-color kind of facades, which if they're not dated now, I think are going to be very soon. Because if this is approved, we'd like it to be something that fits in with character of the community. As far as the height of the tower on the clubhouse, you were already requiring us to give you variances on the height of the, on the height of the buildings. I prefer not to have to give out another one and to see you stay within the thirty-five foot height limit that's there. And to Stu N.C.'s point, I think there are some issues around having a playground that, you know, while it's a nice amenity, in particular, this location is a little alarming for me. It's kind of off back in the woods. I have to admit, I'm not crazy about the tower. As a reformed somewhat of a troublemaker teenager, there is a part of me that looks at that and says, that's just too far off into the woods with a big high tower. This is going to be trouble. And, and, you know, not that I don't want teenagers to have a good time, but I also don't want police to be getting called, you know, every Friday and Saturday night if there's a kids' party in the tower. So the tower does make me a little bit nervous. And I, I think I'd be more comfortable with not a tower, to be frank.
Is, is there reliability?
Either that or it needs to be immediately in their parents' view, one or the other.
And, and is there reliability issue with the tower? We, we actually have a tower in town owned by the town, right across the street, actually. At Fort, Fort Martin. And we've never had a problem with it. And I'm just wondering if, if it's something that would be expensive to ensure, the fear that kids would all... Again, I'm not, I'm not really wider to it either, and that's maybe an expense that you really don't need to take on.
Well, having looked, worked at the municipal trust, the Rhode Island Interlocal Trust, which ensures us, and having found out that they have a specific playground inspector and that there are essentially national standards, and if you're not complying with them, you're either not going to get insurance, you're going to pay a staggering amount of money. And I do somehow find it hard to believe that they go, at least they go along with us having a big open tower. It's essentially the walls weren't caged so that maybe it'd fall out. I think Stu brought this up a little bit earlier. I did have one question and I can ask your traffic engineer, and maybe Molly answers this. The roadway with the tree-lined drive, how, how wide are, are those lanes? Do we know?
Yeah, those are, off the top of my head, they're twelve feet each. They're one-way, so one side is twelve feet, the other side is twelve feet.
So I think then to Stu's point about the schoolchildren, you know, this is New England. Parents don't want to walk with a kindergarten or a first grader and stand in wait for the bus in the ice cold. So if you drive through Tiverton during bus stop time at the end of all the side streets where children get picked up, there's an entire line of parents in cars waiting for their children. So I, I, it's not going to work. I mean, you're going to end up with your, you're going to end up with the entrances literally blocked. I don't know exactly where the pull-off for the buses for capacity reserve, but it, it might make sense for them to be opposite each other. I mean, we do have crossing cars.
I believe it's off Fish Road, is that correct, Stu?
No, it's, no, it's, it's Susan's area, yes.
But, but I, I do think.
There is one on Fish Road as well, but there is one on Susan.
I do think that you are going to have to consider some sort of place for the bus to fully come off the road so it doesn't stop traffic. And that some amount of safe parking for, you know, parents who want to pick kids up. And the last point I would make about the sidewalks. Assuming these go forward, you know, this is the third proposal on Souza Road. And, and I think that if there are children on one side of the street and there are children on the other side of the street, some of them will become friends. I think that sidewalks here are important. There are sidewalks on the other side of the street. I, I think it's important. Souza Road, while it has a low speed limit, when there isn't traffic, people tend to fly down Souza Road. It also has sort of a hill where for, for a bit coming up that hill, you can't see beyond the hill. I'm sure there's a traffic lane for it, I don't know where it is. So I really do think, and, and for anyone who wants to actually walk to Main Road, you know, I think getting there is important. There's also the park and ride at the end of the street, at, you know, at the end of Souza Road. So having a way to walk to there would also be important. So I, I do think you need to think about pedestrian access as well as, as school bus situation. You come back to us.
Could I just add two things to that? So the park and ride also hopes of ripped a bus stop.
It is ripped.
Right, so I would imagine that folks who may be living here may be wanting to take the bus, so I think that's important. I really like the idea of a dedicated sort of pull-off Souza Road for the school buses. If that is the case, then I think we really need to think about sidewalks or something down that main entranceway. Because if that's just a single-lane, twelve-foot road, however people, is the expectation that people will walk down that to get to the bus stop? Should there be some sort of sidewalk type feature there as well to get to the top of the entrance?
There was a, there was an earlier version, which is still on here, but where we had a bus stop here in the, in the development that had a little pull-off and they could circle around to it.
But I, I don't know that, I don't know that the school buses will pull into a private development.
No, they won't.
Those are private roads and, and I don't think that we have that.
Which just means like, so if it's going to be on Souza Road, I would just, I would very much like to see some additional pedestrian walkways. Because some kids might, might walk there. I mean, you're going to get high school kids, if you're going to get high school kids, they're going to walk to the bus stop, right? And they shouldn't have to be battling carts, especially in the morning when there's a higher proportion of traffic coming out of this, going out to Souza. They should have a safe way of getting to the bus stop.
I, I have just two, two or three further quick comments to make. First of all, I'd like to say that I think it's very nicely designed. And so I, I'm hoping that we can keep what we see on the screen now as close to that design as we can possibly get, because it's very nicely designed. I, I think the entranceway is a really classy entranceway. But having said that, two, two quick things. I'd just like to reiterate the comment that I made last time that you appeared before us, which is, I'd like to see more LMI units. We're, we're only at, at the bare minimum of twenty-five percent now. And it's going to be hard for Tiverton ever to catch up with its ten percent state mandate for low and moderate income housing. Unless we get developers who are willing to give us more than the bare minimum of twenty-five percent. So if you could take that back to the, back to the owners and, and see if there's any way it makes sense economically to give us more units. We would certainly like more units. I think I speak for the whole board when I say that. The, the other thing I just wanted to throw out as a possibility is phasing. Does it make sense to break this project into maybe two phases? So that all of those two hundred and fifty-five residential units are hitting town services all at the same, same time? To spread, to spread out the, the increase in the demand for town services over maybe a year or eighteen-month period? Again, that's an economic decision to make and, and, but maybe it's something that you could raise with the, with the Blue Dog Capital Partners and see if that, you know, that makes any sense for them. How, how do the rest of you feel about phasing? Are you strong feelings one way or the other?
I have no feeling one way or the other, but I do support your first point, Stu, about taking a look at a greater volume, greater percentage of affordable housing.
I, I think you would find that universally across the board, the way that, the way that the current Rhode Island general laws are written, that if you are a community that's not at ten percent, this, this model becomes the faster I run, the behinder I get. Because the denominator just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger based on frankly, what's a really huge number of bonus units, to be frank. So, you know, I, I think that, I think that, well, we certainly can't require it because the law is a formula. You know, we will ask to, to. You know, we will ask to consider, you know, more affordable units to help us meet our, to meet our goal.
So, Matt, sure. Two points. Want to address the request with regards to phasing. Unfortunately, this is the type of project that doesn't lend itself to phasing, so it's not like a subdivision where you're doing, you know, 20 lots. You can do a cul-de-sac, separate cul-de-sac, and then grow as you go on. Because this is all kind of intertwined with the amenities and the infrastructure. The infrastructure being significant, the layout for the roadways and the link being significant. It really all works when it's done collectively, conjuntively. And the numbers also work that way. So everything's a fine balance. It's like untied wire. For that reason, the phasing doesn't work, and it's not even conducive for the residents. So let's say you do the left side, the left wing, you don't do the amenities. Then you're kind of at a disadvantage. Those residents are kind of, you're not going to be able to get the price point. You're looking for the, for the afforders that you can feed into it. The same if you do the back or if you're doing per buildings. And most importantly, the statute that our guideline is 4553 requires us to properly, properly spread through the development the affordable units. And so that means you can't cluster them into one particular building or one particular section of the project. They have to be seamless so that they're not, you know, they don't stick out like sore thumbs, if you will. And so that also leads to the difficulty of trying to phase it, phase it out.
I completely accept your comments. I think you're absolutely correct. The way, the way your, the way your development is designed is very different than the one across the street. The one across the street does have two phases.
Yeah.
But, but your project, I think, it needs to be built all at the same time, the more I think about it. I was just kind of throwing that out.
No, no, we appreciate that. And the issue with regards to the school bus, when Molly comes back, I will address that. But I think we can also take care of that issue. Would there is adequate room on the entrance to widen that entranceway to, to either 14 feet on each side accommodating for a sidewalk that goes somewhere? The problem with sidewalks is they, it doesn't make any sense to have a sidewalk that leads to a dead end. But if it's connected to a system, then that makes sense. And obviously, the sidewalk here could make sense leading to a bus stop to the front of Susa, essentially taking what we proposed to the left of the development and putting it on Susa Road, adequately screening it and make it pedestrian-friendly. That would work. Obviously, an issue with that, and that's something we can incorporate into master plan or preliminary plan. The second issue that you've raised, or the third issue, is the number of LMI units. And we presented a memorandum as part of our package, basically addressing exactly that issue and doing the computation for you. And it's, the chivalry is correct. It's a risk to deficiency because you never really get there. The more building permits you issue, the more you fall behind. That unfortunately is the system in the statute. I know that Tiverton is trying to change that statute, and maybe you'll be successful in doing that. And maybe it's one of the things you should point out to the legislature that there is a endless cycle here of not being able to achieve your LMIs. With that said, you know, this developer can't be the concealer of that and solve your problem on this development. But that's not to say that we won't look and see if we can achieve additional LMIs. But at this point, you know, our numbers are what they are. And as more time goes by and as more tariffs come into play, more things happen, the numbers change. And so it becomes more and more difficult for us to catch up. Because we're in that same, same cycle with you. In many ways, we've got to do the, these have to work economically, and they're expensive projects, as we can say. So, but that doesn't mean we won't, we won't make an effort.
I have a concern that goes back years, and that's the property to the east. There is some wetlands there. Molly probably knows. I mean, on the other adjacent property, I don't want to see you going into the buffers along there, that property line.
Yeah, they're delineated on our plan. I think they're already confirmed. Yeah, they are. So I'll let Molly address that. They are. Yeah.
I do have one other question, and I don't know how far you've done with the concrete site engineering. As you know, there's quite a bit of edge on that property. Do you think that you will need to do blasting as part of this?
These are sliding grades, so the idea is to keep the contours the way they are and minimize the blasting, because blasting is expensive. So we don't want to do blasting, and so we designed it to ensure that it's minimized. We have done boring samples, I believe. Yeah, I think we've done boring samples. At this point, we would have definitely done that. So these buildings are situated where we think there'd be minimized blasting. But that's not to say that there won't be the blasting.
When you come back, when you know that information, we'd like to, we'd like to know what exactly that is.
Yeah.
And finally, as to the phasing. I understand that given the way these structures are, that it may not lend itself to phasing. And of course, we can't require that under law. I will say this, however. We've had developers in the past who have come to us promising that in addition to the residences, there are going to be these amenities, which then never appeared. I'm not sure how we do this. I don't know how we do this. But somehow, if the town, if we can do it, if we end up, if this project does end up being approved, somehow, there has to be a way to make sure that the amenities get built. Because we've ended up on the wrong end of that stick more than once in the past.
Yeah, I don't know how you solve that short of restriction or condition, and I'm not sure you have the purview to do that. But I have to, I have to see if the developers will make that a voluntary agreement.
I think at least the clubhouse.
Oh, yeah.
It's going to have the laser office, so I think that one.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't have a problem doing that because I know that it will be done here, so I agree with that. The other thing too is, you know, I mean, it's a site, as part of your approval process, you're approving the site plan with the buildings on it. So I'd be, in my opinion, I'd be hard-pressed to advise someone that they have the ability to not put the amenities there because it would run a violation of your, of your plans and your approvals. But then again, it all depends on who's paying me, so I could see the argument on the other side as well.
Yeah. We've been heard before, so.
It's my opinion that they would require a plan amendment to not include an amenity. That was part of the final plan.
Yeah, I think you're right about that because that's a, it's a consideration that the planning board had at the time that made its approval. Especially if it writes it into its approval that it's a consideration, that the approval is subject to the considerations that it's taken. It's part of their, part of the fact line.
I just have a few questions. We talked about, so in the R40, so the height maximum is 35 feet. You testified that there would be three-story buildings, which would be 43 square feet. Is the 43, is the 43 square feet the least relief necessary in height in order to achieve your requested density for those buildings with three-story buildings?
To make them feel like a New England vernacular and have gable-like roofs, it would. With a 50-foot.
Yeah, so the same with the 50-foot.
Yeah, I've actually taken, the 50-foot one, I try to take those gables and bring them down into the four-story so they're not so high, but I'm trying to keep the integrity of the kind of New England vernacular gables.
So is it your testimony that in order to achieve the design, that the required, or the requested height of the applicant is the least relief necessary in order to achieve that goal?
Yes.
Now, the, the units themselves, their code does not allow us, so the town's ordinance limits the unit structures to eight long units per structure. And can you clarify what the applicant is proposing?
So for each building, there are eight units per floor. And that's true for the three-story and for the four-story.
And is that necessary in order to achieve the requested density?
Yes. Yeah, to stay within the amount of developed area that we're restricted to. Keep it within those 10 buildings. To stay within the buildable square footage or acreage, we contain them to those 10 buildings.
Just to clarify, so when you say restricted or stayed within the restricted area, is that a result of the applicant complying with the town's conservation ordinance?
That's correct.
So is it your testimony that in order to be compliant with the conservation ordinance and in order to achieve the requested density, the dimensional variance for the number of structure, number of units per structure is the least relief necessary?
The way that we design this, yes.
I actually just have one more question, and I apologize if I missed this. Between the eight three-story buildings and the two four-story buildings, what's the, what's the mapping or the layout of like two-bedroom versus three-bedroom versus one-bedroom units?
In terms of their floor plan now?
Yeah, well, like where, is it a mix? Or, you know, are the three-bedrooms only in the four-story units? You know what I mean?
The three-story buildings, which there are eight of, we've put the one, three, and two-bedroom mixes within those.
Okay.
The four-story have, because there's 162 bedrooms and 48 three and 48 one-bedroom, they all, all those mixes have in the three-story buildings.
Okay.
The four-story buildings, which are two, have two bedrooms.
Okay.
And these will be integrated?
Yeah, just yellow items.
Yes, they'll be distributed.
And I think I asked you this before, Mr. Vencini. I asked about the market research and the demographic research you've done on these and your targets for, based on market research, or, you know, how is something which is big supportable here?
Yeah, so I, I'll leave that to, to the developer. Because I can't really apply as to what the market research is, other than to say that they would not be... It's not, it's not, it's not the concept of the idea here that let's build it and hope someone comes. It's too big for that, too expensive a project. So I know the demographics have been done. I just don't know what those reports are and whether they can share those reports. Some of that is proprietary. And so I can't at the next meeting provide some information for you that would be helpful to them. That doesn't duplicate their modeling and how they...
We're not asking any proprietary secrets here. We...
Yeah, so if I understand you, basically, you're looking for some type of information to substantiate that this would be a need within the housing stock that would be filled and not left vacant and ultimately to a failure of the project and abandoned midway through, although this would be built out to its full capacity. But at some point, it failed, and then someone would have to come back and ask for you to revise it or something.
Or that it turns into a half-baked, you know, and because these are rental units, you know, a management company with a half-baked development like this isn't really all inclined to do a lot in terms of maintenance.
Yeah, understood. Glad you had that info for you.
Anybody else, or?
Yes, I just wanted to bring Molly back to just do a couple of cleanup issues and then leave it to the public. Molly, a couple of points. One is, can you just talk about the emergency vehicle license and the circulation and whether or not that's been identified and reviewed by decree?
Yes, so we've run a computerized program called Auto-Turn. It's part of the Auto-Cab drafting program, and it will drive a ladder truck through this site, and we get the directional requirements from the fire marshal as to how large your truck is.
And I see the fire marshal is here. Can you, can you, her?
Well, I'll wait till she's done, because there's other things I need to address.
Molly, can you address the issue about the sidewalks and the school bus drop-off and pickup?
Yes, so going forward, we will review sidewalks out to Susa Road. And then at the time of design, we would also have to review that with RIDE, if there's some sort of pull-off or what would be allowed in terms of the state RIDE way associated with Susa.
In conjunction with the daycare, would it be possible to look at also whether or not we can incorporate the school bus drop-off as part of the daycare or the daycare entrance?
We could certainly meet with the school department and go through all those access points and issues.
Frankly, our objective is to minimize the traffic on Susa Road. Because of the way that our streets are laid out off of Main Road and including Susa Road, with the number of school buses and the number of times they need to stop during school bus pickup, there are often lines, staggeringly long lines of cars behind school buses, but not just going one way, because the buses are picking up at the same time, going in both directions. And we're trying to avoid more of that where we can. And backing up Susa Road that way with two buses going in opposite directions at the same time only compounds an already difficult problem.
So we can commit to look at that for preliminary plan in conjunction with the sidewalks and the widening of the boulevard entrance? I have nothing further.
Anybody have a last question?
You sent us a document, a memorandum, I guess was the town and RDI's.
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question.
Yeah, it's a good case.
What is the OPNR? I couldn't find it defined. Was that the applicant?
Yeah, that's the, that OPNR was the, I think that was the plaintiff in that case. And that's the, that's the Town Narrator versus State Housing Appeal Board. It's a decision recently issued in February 20, February 11, 2025. And it really addresses the issue of LMI units and specifically comprehensive plans and how towns are to perceive comprehensive plans in conjunction with the new state statute. Permits.
Permits, yeah.
Right.
Permits, yeah.
Because shaft is gone.
Now the shaft is gone, right. So this is, so that decision really is one of the first ones to come post the non-shafted existing.
That's the one that was in the journal?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Any other questions here, Mr. Vencini, before I open the report? At this point, we're going to, oh, well, actually, I took it back. I'd like to have Susan Mara from Western Institute provide any comments.
Sure, thank you. Susan Mara from Western Institute, acting as a planning advisor. The public hearing in February included the staff memo that we've talked about a little bit tonight. And since then, there have been two things that have happened. One is that there's been a technical review committee meeting. Another is that the applicant has provided some supplementary materials on February 21st. And we have updated our memo or created a second memo to address those additional materials which were submitted. So at the TRC meeting, so that's the technical review committee meeting on February 25th, there were comments, again, a lot of these we've talked about tonight. But in general, the TRC had some comments related to engineering, and they were location of, for trash removal, snow removal, school bus stops, the location for a fire suppression. And then the Department of Public Works and the fire marshal had comments related to water service. Two main comments. One is that any, you know, pumping would require backup. Another is that an hydraulic model would be required in order to, for the fire marshal to make the determination. in order to, for the fire marshal to make the determination that, you know, the water capacity and level of service is available to serve the development. So that was the TRC meeting. And then we also provided a supplementary memo. And this is, this is only for the materials that were received on the 21st. And so like the traffic study update was received Friday, that's not, that's not part of this. But there were four documents provided. One is a report by Himantel Consulting dated January 20th, 2025. And in general, the, what the report said, this report concludes that the proposed development is consistent with the comprehensive plan. That's his report, including specific goals and strategies and actions from the housing element. The report also excerpts sections from the comprehensive plan that acknowledged the need for balancing density with infrastructure capacity. And that's on page 20 of his report. He, he excerpts goals and policies from the comprehensive plan. I do also want to say, I didn't, I didn't put this in the memo, but I think that, you know, his reliance on language related to mixed-use developments may be a little bit far from reality now that a lot of the commercial uses have been removed from the development. So at this point, it's just the daycare. So some of the benefits that they were talking about related to additional commercial development and tax revenue may be, may be, you know, more appropriate for prior versions of the plan. So we did concur that the comp plan does recommend that local land use decisions balance the need for affordable housing with the town's ability to provide infrastructure and potential environmental impacts. And so the scale of the density that's contemplated is pretty far away from what is in the zoning and what is in the comprehensive plan in terms of what could be built here. The yield plan under the current regs is 33 units. They're proposing 256. That difference in scale, I think, makes it very critical that the environmental and infrastructure impacts be considered very carefully. And so, you know, the, I've heard that their hydraulic model has been recommended and I've heard the applicant say tonight that this is something that will be provided during final plan. We recommend, you know, because, because of this scale that's out of, or the scale that's maybe out of character with what is contemplated currently in the town's zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan, that this be provided during preliminary plan. And so the second piece of, the second document that we provided, Molly from Dupree Engineering spent a little bit of time at the beginning of the meeting clarifying. And so we, yes, we did get your memo and thank you for clarifying your density and your conservation land calculations. We also received a memo from Robert Ferrari dated 10/7, updated January 30th. The memo found that there is sufficient reserve source and water storage capacity. But recommended a booster pumping and flow meter station. That meets fire flow requirements. Hydraulic model to demonstrate capacity under all operating and fire flow requirements and detailed design documents for all new infrastructure. And finally, we're issued a updated plan set dated January 1st, 2025. It's an 11-page set that addressed some of the comments from the original staff memo for the first meeting. And a lot of these were related to elevations and design, which they provided. And I think we saw, we saw those tonight. And that is all I have. Thank you.
I would like to echo Susan's main point. We are not a community that is blessed with lots of public infrastructure in terms of water in Souza. It's very limited. And we know now that sometimes that infrastructure struggles to meet the needs of citizens where people just don't have water pressure for some period of time or, you know, or the, or the water quality is not good. And one of the things that this board needs to do is to make sure that any new development that comes doesn't essentially de-water another entire section of town. So to, to the point of, and I will let, I will let the planners and lawyers argue this out. I think it is really important that we have a complete handle and understanding on both the wastewater and the water situation at preliminary plan because that is one of the most critical pieces in the community. I'm sure that the fire marshal, who I'm gonna call on in a minute, will tell you it's not going to be okay for your sprinklers to be going off every other week because the water pressure's dropped. And that, you know, sends the alarms off. You know, it's a limitation that we have, but it's an important limitation that may not only affect your development, but more importantly, all the residents who currently live here. And with that, I think what I'd like to do is, as we open the public hearing, my, my first person I'm going to ask up is the fire marshal, Captain Daniel Murphy, who's been back there just to talk to us a little bit about whether or not he's in concurrence with both the access for emergency vehicles and concurrence with the need for hydraulic modeling for the water.
All right, good afternoon, good evening, thank you. So I was asked to be here. I am the fire marshal and I am the captain Dan Murphy. I am not a fire chief, do not confuse me.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I think we're saying the marshal.
Yeah. Couple of questions too in regards to our access and our ladder truck and our reach. We reach the mill right now. The mill is five stories. And we have 109-foot ladder truck that is newly purchased. It's probably just over a year old now, maybe two. So I do not have a concern of our ladder truck reaching a four-story building. We currently reach the mill at five stories. And it's a lot taller than these, these buildings here. So there's no concern about our ladder truck. In regards to, excuse me, access into the property, the fire code does allow, this does require a 20-foot wide pathway in, but it also does allow it to run way with no parking to go down to 12 feet. My concern is our trucks are probably just about 11 feet, about a little wider than 11 feet. And they have the trees in the middle. So it's supposed to be 13 feet high clearance. And again, minimum at least 12 if you go in single lane, no parking. I can go down to 12. My trucks are tall. Trees in my trucks don't work together. We will break things. So if we're gonna go to 12, then we've got to be careful of the trees in the middle of that road. Because the trees are gonna grow.
Right.
And so that's gonna be a concern. Might not be a concern now, it's gonna be a concern five, 10, 20 years down the road when I'm breaking stuff on my truck because of the trees are breaking the stuff. So that's gonna be a concern of an access.
And that would also be a concern too if parents decided to sort of park in that area for bus.
Correct.
If you needed to get an emergency vehicle.
Yes. So that was, when he said 12 feet, I kind of looked at the court, I'm really looking at it right now. It does allow me to go to 12 feet, but that's one way, no parking. And then my other concern would be. In regards to the water, which is everybody's hot topic. They, folks break the building. If they cannot meet the demand of, let's say, we'll talk fire suppression, they do have a right to get alternate water, whether the casino has it right now. They give a water tank that just for fire suppression, where it doesn't take the demand off the system, it is a storage tank. Again, I'm not saying that's the avenue, but if they say they can't meet it, they can only meet domestic water, they do have the right, per fire code, to get an alternate water source. And it could be a pond, it could be a system, which I don't like. It could be water tanks. Again, I don't design the sprinkler system, that's what these, not this gentleman, he's an attorney. It would be their professionals that do that. If they don't choose that route, they do have a right to do pumps. I'm going to treat this development just like they treated the one across the street and just like we did the one on Bogomash Road with the rec area.
I'm sorry, the one where?
The one across the street, the one at the rec area.
Bogomash Road.
Bogomash Road, thank you. So the one on Bogomash Road does have pumps because their water system lacked the pressures. Didn't lack the volume, just lacked the pressure. And from the letter that we received from Molly, it seems like this may, may have that issue. Just like the one across the street, may have that issue. And when they provide the hydraulic calculations for their development, I'm not gonna look at Stonebridge's hydraulic calculations. I'm not gonna look at Notiv's hydraulic calculations. I'm looking at their hydraulic calculations, of this development only. And just like I did across the street, if there's heights that don't meet the minimum standards, then they have to come up with, whether it be one pump, two pumps, six pumps, 20 pumps. That's on them to do. And then once they get that pressures, then we can move on. If that's, now they need it, down the road they need it, that I do not know, that's up to you. But that, I will not approve this, I don't wanna say planned, but whenever that step comes, that will be one of my requirements and that's what they said at the TRC. I will treat them exactly like we did everybody else.
Thank you, Captain Murphy. Does anybody have a question for?
Are you recommending an alternate water source?
I'm not recommending. So they have to do, what they do, they hydraulic calculations. And there's a water demand that they have to do in regards to sprinklers. Now, in the sprinkler system, it's not like the movies where one goes off, every single sprinkler in the building goes off. That's not how sprinkler systems work. It's designed for one sprinkler had to go off and then it goes from there. So their sprinkler company will design the system and say, we need X amount of water for this. Then they design the system backwards. And then if they say, well, we don't have the water, then they have to come up with an alternate water. We're not making that decision right now. That's not until the design phase or what have you.
We're talking about fire suppression.
Fire suppression, correct.
We're not talking about how to.
Well, I mean, that's, again, that's, the casino has both. Casino has a domestic water tank, casino also has fire suppression technology. Again, that's above my purview, but I, I'll talk fire suppression because the domestic water is not my issue.
Anybody have a question for Captain Murphy?
No.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we're gonna open it up for a public hearing. So if you'd like to be heard on this, we'd be happy to hear your comments. It's, you know, we've been here a while and we've probably got a little bit more to go. So I'm gonna ask if possible, if you have comments, if you could keep them to three minutes or less, that'd be incredibly helpful. I do want to say before the first person comes up, I do want to recognize that we have received emails that are not in support of this development from John Osborne, Lindsay LaRiviere, Marsha Robertow, I think I'm saying that the right way, Sandra Van Hop and Tom Peterson. Those emails have been distributed to the entire planning board. I believe that they have been distributed to the applicant as well. And the information in them will be made part of the record. So thank you for taking the time to let us know your concerns. Anyone from the public would like to be heard? Anybody?
Susan Anderson, Main Road, and I'm Anna Butter. I, I have several concerns. What is the, the, the way that the buildings are built on the slabs and they're so tall, are you aware that there's a quarry? I want them to know that there's a quarry that lasts very near there. And I want to make sure that they have a structural engineer to verify that their buildings will, will be sufficient, just like we did with the, with the other, other development across the street. So that's one thing. The other one is obviously the water. I lost water for several hours a couple of weeks ago. And I don't know, and when it, and like I said, my pressure in my kitchen faucet is less than this. Full tap. And it's been that, been that way. So my concern is when, I don't know what, when I lost, when I lost water and I'm like, I'm very concerned about Brookdale. I don't know, is Brookdale on Stonebridge? I have no idea, but that's a big thing. And if they lose water, because there was a main that broke on Riverside. And that's what happened. And I didn't get water for a couple of hours after. And then I was concerned about, you know, not only Brookdale. Do they have a pump? I don't know. But if I lose water, are these guys gonna lose water up the hill for me? Because I don't, you know, and, and if they have something break, am I gonna, you know, I'm concerned about my, what's gonna happen with me because I don't really have the pressure now as to when this gets pumped up to them. You know, and if something happens, I just, there's a lot of water that's going up there. And I just want to make sure that when this goes up there with these hydrology, hydraulic models, that they take into concern not only the capacity, but also the pressure and make sure that the pressure of those of us down on Main Road are taken into consideration as well. That's, that's a big concern for me. The other thing I have is that the detention pond that's, that they have on the Osborne Bennett Historic District land. They have half of it, half of it going on the Historic District land. It looks like according to their plans that it is on the agricultural land that's in our, in our comprehensive plan. It shows the agricultural land, which is very, very significant. And that's what makes the district, the district is the agricultural land. And I'm very concerned about that detention pond being in the agricultural land. The sidewalk, if you put a sidewalk in, I want you to make sure that you keep the historic stone walls. And actually, the historic stone walls are throughout that property and those should be kept as well. The tower, I have a very big concern about the tower. And my concern is the same thing that you had mentioned. My first thought was when I saw that tower there and then I saw that it was up and it looked like the same type of tower that was in South Kingstown or when you have, you know, Route 138 and Route 1, that's what it looked like. My thought is, okay, it's in the woods, it's away from everybody. Who the heck is gonna go up there? What are they gonna be doing? Are they gonna be flicking matches off? Are they gonna be flicking cigarettes or whatever off? What else are they gonna be doing all hours of the night? I'm really concerned about the woods and, and anything that would happen there. And also what impact it will have on wildlife. There's deer there, there's coyotes, there's turkeys, there's bobcat, there's eagles. I mean, I'm, I'm very concerned about that tower and whoever might be going there. I mean, you, you think it's for the residents, it may not be. Once people, you know, kids, whatever, they find out, oh, there's a tower there, oh, well, same thing with Fort Carter. I know we have had incidents there, but they, but they may not know that they do. But when I was in open space, we had to put a chain on the readouts because there were kids that were using it as bike, you know, things. So we had to put a chain there. We also had incidents on the tower. But since we had the incidents with the kids on the readouts, the cops were going through a policing act. So maybe that's why you hadn't heard anything on the tower. So that's, that's basically my concerns. Thank you.
Anyone else? Sir?
Hi. John here.
I'm sorry, your last name?
Baylord, B-A-Y-L-O-D. I have a question on the estimate for the, this, the population of the kids. And basically, I would imagine a worst-case analysis would have two kids per bedroom that's not the master bedroom. And those occupancies, can you tell me what the variation in those occupancy rates are? You know, how many kids in one bedroom?
Mr. Baylord, sir, you need to address your questions to the board.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Oh, that's, it's okay. Oh, my God. Sorry, not okay. Here we go. Yeah, help us out. The question is how, wow, I'm just gonna hold this one out a little bit. How, how, what's the worst-case analysis? I mean, how, what do you expect the, the worst case, you know, the most kids? I mean, what do you expect the worst case, you know, the most kids from this development will be? It seems to me that the, in order to come up with an estimate of between 30 and 50, let's say that's the mean value, that kind of implies a significant variation. So if you take those occupancy rates, and you ask the question, what's the, what's the most, you know, within some confidence interval of 95%, what's the highest occupancy rate that would be achieved, and what would be the school population resulting from that? That's the question. What's the worst-case additional school population?
I can tell you that the superintendent belongs to a statewide association of school superintendents in the state of Rhode Island. And they have on staff a person who is an expert in estimating school population from new development. And when we began, when Newtown or Tiberian formed an infrastructure study group about a year ago, we received some correspondence from the school superintendent about this expert. And so I'm assuming that when we pass on to the school department and the school committee the material that we have, Mr. Lombardi, that they will send that on to the expert in the Association of School Superintendents, and we'll get a second opinion. And that's the best we can do, because as the chair has already explained, this is not an exact science.
No, it's not. You know, from statistical estimation, you have the mean value and you have the variation. And if these numbers reflect the mean value, we'd like to know what's the worst variation. And so that expert should be able to provide that answer exactly. Okay.
Although keeping in mind, as Mr. Mancini pointed out, and he is correct, that information is being provided to the town for planning purposes only, it is not one of...
Yeah, I get, I agree, and thank you, thank you for the information.
Anyone else?
I just have a question. Coming up, Captain Peruzzi, 264, Captain Circle.
I was looking over records from the Pata Heights Board, and one of the conditions for approval was the applicants will extend the concrete walkway along Fish Road north to the property line, and the applicant will provide a concrete walkway, sidewalk west of the property line on Souza Road from their site entrance. So that was a thing for approval. I don't know that it makes any difference or not.
Well, I will say this. Generally, we try and ask an applicant first, but I do think, at least in my mind, that sidewalks are a public safety issue. And in fact, public safety is one of the things that we can, you know, look very hard at when approving an application. So I, we usually ask first, but I think all of us take public safety here, especially if there are children involved, very seriously. Thank you. Anybody else?
Ms. Meredith Nocci, please, bro. So sidewalks, yes, please. I think in the picture, they have sidewalks within the community, and you guys are talking about them out to the road for the buses. And then, it would be nice if they could at least even do their own length of Souza Road. You know, I don't know what the options are there, but another consideration, and I don't know if it's one that we have any options are, but to possibly use the roofs and the garages for solar power. I'm not asking for another solar field, but possibly some solar for the buildings. In the picture, I just, this is more about quality of life for the people living there. The apartments may be perfectly, wonderfully sized to code, I mean, obviously code, but comfortable living. But like, is there a proper space in each of these places for a family to have a dinner? And not just like the kitchen, living room, but an actual dining space? And that may be neither here nor there, but important to me. The deficit in tax numbers or whatever, the revenue generated versus what it will cost to have this based on the numbers we're looking at. So if it's that much for this one community, and we have all of these communities on the table, it doesn't sound like so much for the one community, but when you add them all up, again, this is for you guys, not for the developer, because he's only responsible for his own numbers. And then, the last thing, I think, is just when we're looking at the water issue, is there a way for us to be able to account, again, it's not on the developer or the fire marshal to look at this, but for us, as we plan, how much water all of these places are going to be taking up at the same time, even though somehow we're expected to not look at them together, right? I don't know. All right, thank you for listening.
Well, I can answer that question. The water districts have to sort of keep a running tally of what they've approved. So it's not a matter of, oh, I approved this one, I approved this one, but none of them are built yet, and then they're all gonna get built. So they are keeping a tally of where they are in terms of what they think they can provide. They are looking out for you that way, for sure. Excellent, thank you.
Can I just get this going?
M-U-C-C. Any more, anybody else? Any other members? All right, in that case, I'm gonna see if the planning board has any other comments or questions for Mr. Mancini.
I'm concerned about the time clock. Can we get this on the agenda for our April meeting before the time clock expires? I think the time clock expires on the ninth.
It is. It's already on.
It's on for the first. And we're in a full study. So if we can do that, if Sue was available, and then, at that time, if we need to extend the time clock, we can discuss it. I just wanted to make sure we...
Anybody else? I have a couple of just closing things. One is that there is one member of the community who has a real concern about his lot lines versus the development's lot line. I don't know if that has been investigated or not.
It's my neighbor Jason Osborne.
So I would like to get that resolved. I'm not entirely sure, because I haven't seen his sort of bounded plan, but he is concerned about this, and I would like to get that resolved. Last thing I would like to point out, and there was a little bit of mention about the community comprehensive plan, and Mr. Prudential has provided us with, as to be expected from a supplemental, a long and detailed discussion regarding, consistent with the comprehensive plan. And, you know, I've often said about the comprehensive plan, because it's an interesting document for every community which has to have one. You know, you can go through the comprehensive plan and make an argument for just about anything, because there are so many chapters that cover so many different facets and desires of the town that I, my favorite analogy is that you could cheerpick your way through the comprehensive plan and make a really strong argument why we should have exotic dancing on Main Road. Why? Because we talk about our Main Road Commercial District, we want to upgrade it, we want to improve the buildings, we want to, you know, attract, we want to attract owners that are gonna invest in their buildings, in one section. We got a whole nother section that talks about how much we want to bring commercial revenue into the town, because we want to offset the burden on residential property owners. And then we have a whole nother section about how important it is that we support the arts and artists, right? So, you know, that's the nature of the comprehensive plan. But I do just want to point out a few things, and I'm gonna really stick to the housing element, not all the other places that you could go and get little tidbits. And in the housing goals in 6.10, there is, you know, a statement that we want to encourage a diversity of housing types that meet the needs of all segments of the population, while maintaining the character of the community. You know, these are big buildings for Tiberian. But I do hope that the developer, in so far what we've seen today, is a willingness to look at vernacular architecture, open space, preservation of the Osborne Bennett Historic District. That's a really important part of the housing goal. So I think that those are important things to look at. You know, Action 5 actually specifies the specific districts where multifamily is allowed. This is not one of them, so this is a variance, but because we do have other districts that do allow multifamily housing. And, you know, that is the same, that's the same in Action 8. And, you know, the, again, from the housing section, that we want to promote affordable housing options that are well-integrated into the community, and foster geographic, social, and cultural diversity. I will say that this is the third application for a comprehensive permit on Souza Road, and there is a part of me that's a little uncomfortable with that. You know, Tiberian, I think, has done a really good job of trying to integrate in the past affordable housing into the community. We have the Warren Mill, which was one of the very first adaptive reuses in the entire state, right? And then we've got the Sandy Woods Community, which is an award-winning arts and agricultural community. We have a partnership with Church Community Housing, which now owns, you know, a sizable number of single-family homes that are deep restricted, and they are spread through neighborhoods all across town, north, south, east, west. We have the Tiberian Senior Community, so we've done a pretty good job, I think, although, you know, we haven't had as many applications for it as we might have needed to get to our 10%. I am a little, I am a little uncomfortable with the idea that all the affordable housing is going on Souza Road. I don't think that the town ever had an idea that it was like, well, let's just put all the affordable housing over here. I realized that that plan is available, I realized that under the comprehensive permit laws of the General Assembly, that it is allowed, but, you know, again, I go back to the idea of, if that's gonna be the case, it's really important that these things are integrated into the community in the best way that they possibly can. And finally, the key thing, the one thing in the comprehensive plan that is not futile, that is black and white, and again, developer has a right to ask for variance for this. In the future lineage map, we have set aside zones for multifamily housing. R40 is not one of them. So I think, you know, while we are required to make those considerations, and the developer, you know, has the law behind him, and we may be expected to make that consideration under the law, I do think it's a big ask. So those are kind of my comments on the comprehensive plan. Anybody else? In that case, Mr. Mancini, I think, thank you for bringing your team tonight, thank you for your patience with our questions, and we will see you on April the first.
Right, we'll reconvene to April the first, and the good news is I don't anticipate getting you any additional information, I think you now have everything that we have. I will have a Prudential available to testify on my first, so you can prepare a form, and we should leave him a couple of hours to do his present presentation. Can we make sure we solve that lot line thing?
Could you let Mr. Prudential know that we have already documented?
Yeah, no, I remind my own personal Prudential statements. Can we try to solve that lot line thing for April 1st? Like, get some closure on that?
So, I don't know what you're looking for there. Do we have...
I'll have to chat to see what, I'll look into what the issue is, and then I'll look to see where our survey is, and we'll request a survey of the neighbor and see where the deficiency is. I don't suspect that it's gonna be a major deviation to really impact us, but we'll confirm it, I mean.
I mean, possibly, we could ask Mr. Osborne to send an email to Ed that is very specific about where he sees this issue, and that could be forwarded on to you.
Yeah, that's fine, that'd be great.
I would just like to have that resolved.
Yeah.
Okay. In that case, Mr. Mancini, thank you for coming. We have another agenda item, in case rest of you want to stay for more fascinating information, but otherwise, maybe we want to bring up another item. So the next one on our agenda, as some of you may know, the speaker has introduced a whole new set of house bills for this year. And some of us have looked at some of them, Ashley has looked at a number of them, so Ashley's gonna kind of give us a brief overview of what is now being proposed for amendments to the housing bills. And I don't think we're gonna love them.
So I have not gone through all of these yet in full detail, I am working my way through them one by one, so I will give you a higher, high-ish level overview. There are also some bills that have been introduced that are not part of the speaker's package. There's one that eliminates the Low to Modern Income Housing Act, I don't expect that's gonna move out of committee. There's one that differentiates what a substantial multifamily housing project is, is anything over 60 units. And then, it allows that to go through a comprehensive permit process, but it said it, you don't get streamlined permitting, so you'd have to go to zoning and planning. I don't know the intent, I mean, I think there's some parts of that that are worth looking at, but I wouldn't do it that way. So there's a, I would say there's a, there's some stuff that's worth looking at that might be supportable there. Let's see. There's several additions to the section on the purposes of zoning, which essentially inserts certain types of land use into, into the purposes of zoning, which would essentially mean that you would have to address them. This is what they did with adaptive reuse last year. And it basically says that you would have to consider multifamily within the urban services boundary. I have a big problem with this one because the USB is not a mapped feature that you can, like, you can't map this feature and say, like, that's in and that's out. It's a, it's mapped as a buffer. So if you actually laid this thing on the ground with parcel data, it could be as wide as three lots. We don't know because it's not, it's mapped at the twenty-five-thousand-foot view. And in order to say you're in the USB or you're outside the USB, it would need to be mapped on a parcel basis so that the towns would know where the line is and what's in and what's out. So I appreciate the premise, you know, the, the purpose behind it, but it doesn't work in practical application because that dataset, one, is twenty years old, and, two, isn't detailed enough for you to be able to, at the local level, say this works and this doesn't, or this is in and this is out. And I think you're just asking for litigation over that. So I, I have a problem. I also have a problem with cherry picking from Land Use 2025 and using it for purposes that we like and ignoring the rest of it, which talks about what you should do in the USB and what you shouldn't do outside the USB. So when you set up a scenario that says you should do multifamily in the USB, but also leaves you outside the USB, subject to high-density comprehensive permits, I don't think we're actually implementing Land Use 2025. And I, I don't, I can't get behind cherry picking out of it what works for you and doesn't. So I, I don't support, I wouldn't support that. There's another one that basically says that you can split, you can split an oversized lot, even if that split would not meet the zoning requirements for the district in which that lot resides because you can, you can figure out if, within two hundred feet, more than fifty percent of the lots would be of a similar size of what you were splitting. And if it is, then, then you can subdivide. And it relies on GIS data that's certified by either a planner or a surveyor. I, I mean, I can't even begin to tell you how many problems that would create. We, we know that assessor data is not always accurate. We have assessor data that runs through the middle of houses. I, as a planner, am not qualified to certify whether GIS data is accurate or not. And a land surveyor, if were asked to do that, I, I wouldn't think they would want to because their professional standards state in black and white that they should, you should never establish or move a lot line with anything less than a Class One survey. So I, I don't understand how we even get to this. I wouldn't support this bill because it just practically doesn't make any sense. You can stop me if you have questions. I can't guarantee that I can answer them because I, I'm, again, have only skimmed the surface of most of them and have dug into, like, three or four. There are eleven in the speaker's package, and there are a couple of other ones, like I said, that are outside of the speaker's package. There's one about zoning certificates because right now zoning certificates are, they're not, they're not really legally binding documents. They don't hold up in court. This would kind of change that and would require that they get written and, and issued within twenty days of the written request. Let's see. It, it talks about allowing, and adding to the purposes of zoning, allowing commercial development in, in some or all of your, I'm sorry, allowing residential in some or all of your commercial districts, which would mean that if anybody doesn't have a mixed-use zone, they would have to get one. You'd have to implement a mixed-use zone in at least one of your commercial districts. I don't think that matters here. You, you already do it in a couple. There's, again, another one. I'm not sure I really understand the purpose of this. Talks about co-living.
It's essentially, it's essentially, it doesn't require, but it encourages communities to create zoning for co-living, which would be, and it says, like, individual lockable sleeping rooms.
Just like dormitories or boarding houses, basically.
But then with shared, you know, with shared kitchen.
Shared kitchen and not for facilities. There's another one that talks about, there's another one that, I don't, I'm looking for the way that they refer to it. The one where they want to basically have zero, there's zero lot lines. So it would be, essentially, it would be like, they would be considered single-family units, but they would not, they would not have to have, they would not have to have any separation between the units. So you could essentially create, like, a townhouse style of development and call it single-family and be able to separate those townhouses with lot lines. It, it's a bizarre concept. I'm not sure how that works actually in practice.
I have a feeling that that's more of a city thing where you see, where you see either sometimes older houses or apartment buildings that have common wall, but technically they're on a separate lot. But it's really a, that's a city kind of model.
It creates a land bank program. There's a bill creating a land bank program for affordable units. Let's see.
There's one that, there's one that creates essentially three, only three zones. And there, there'd be a statewide only-three zone. And that would be if you have, if you, if you have public water and public store and you're within a quarter of a mile of a bus stop, or public transportation, I should say, then the maximum lot size that the town can require is twenty-five-hundred square feet. If you're, if you have public water and public water, but you're not within a quarter of a mile of public transportation, the maximum lot size is five thousand square feet. And that, everything else, the maximum lot size is one acre.
That sounds draconian.
There's a couple of them, of proposed amendments to the Low to Moderate Income Housing Act. It's, it's designed in two pieces. So there's the, the first piece of the legislation amends the act, and those amendments take effect upon passage. And then the second portion of the bill amends the act January one of 2026. Part one, less, a little less concerning. Part two is, I think, where we, we would have some problem. Essentially, all of the safeguards that are in there now that give you the ability to either meet the definition of meeting local need or reaching ten percent as your kind of places where you can, you can get to that give you some, in one case, in meeting local need, if you meet the definition of meeting local need, you have the ability in the law to deny comprehensive permits on that premise. They're deleting that completely. That's where that's gone. So even if you're meeting local need, you can't deny a comprehensive permit. There's also a provision in there that says that you now, instead of compare, instead of using the, instead of a finding of consistency with your comprehensive plan, it is now a finding of consistency with the affordable housing portion of your housing chapter, which is just insane to me. You cannot cherry pick and pull out a chapter and only find consistency with a portion of a chapter and ignore the rest of the plan. But that's, that's the proposal. There is, I just had the other one in my head and I lost it. So the other provision in the second part of the bill is that if you are meeting ten percent, you are still subject to comprehensive permits, which right now, if you achieve ten, I mean, this is the goalpost that everybody has been, you know, driving for, for thirty years. Now that's gone. The goalpost is not moved, it's just gone. And you're still, you're still subject to a comprehensive permit. The difference is you're not subject to it under the density provisions in it now that would still apply to, to communities at less than ten percent. But you're subject to it. But you can also deny a comprehensive permit if you're at, if you've achieved ten percent. So I have no idea what we're doing, except wasting people's time and money to apply for comprehensive permits to municipalities who have achieved ten percent, who then can deny you because they've achieved ten percent. I'm, I'm lost there.
I know you're on a roll.
Sorry, yeah, go ahead.
But can I just, can I just use, like, so two, two things. One, is it possible to send out an email with a list of, like, all of the names?
Yes, but I am working right now on organizing all of these. And there will be a table that will have all of the bill numbers with a clickable link that will take you to the bill. I'm trying very hard to get this done.
But here's my next point.
Yeah.
Is clearly, are, are we, will we organize a formal comment or set of comments that goes back up to the State House? Because clearly, we are all sitting here going, oh my gosh, why, you, you know what I mean? And I think it both oozes us as a community to be able, or as a body here, to be able to put in writing a formal comment that gets back to whomever it needs to get back to. So it doesn't look like, whether or not it's factored in ultimately is another question. But we have taken a step as a public body to give.
I, I, I think absolutely we do have to do that. And I think, similar to the vote that we took with the recommendations for the existing laws, I think we need to do the same thing. I think we need to send them to the council. I also think that we need to ask the council to consider themselves or considering allowing us, or some of us, who, you know, to actually be able to go to the committee hearings. And, and, and we could only do that with county, you know, I mean, it goes in individual citizen. But as, you know, as a member of the board, you could only go with, with council approval, I think. But I think we do need to do that because I think it is important to show up at these committee hearings when we're talking about this stuff.
Because I think it affords, like, you're so far removed, right? I don't want to call it ivory tower, but, I mean, you're so far removed from the day-to-day, the front lines here. And I think it's, I think it's incumbent upon us to be able to provide that real-life perspective in a constructive way that, you know, advocates for our town and our citizenry and all of that stuff.
So there's another, there's another one that's doing further amendments to the subdivision act, and it would essentially create a minor subdivision would be any number of lots that don't create a street. So any number of frontage lots would be a minor, which would never come to the planning board. So now we've gone from six to nine to forever, infinity number of lots that won't go before the planning board. There's a couple other minor things in that one. I think that was probably the biggest one that I took note of. There are a couple of minor things in, in here with wording that just, it doesn't, it just doesn't work in practical application. It just, it's not, it won't function well. Pre-applications are not required anymore. They may be held at the request of the applicant, so you can't ask for a pre-app anymore.
And there are some really things, like, there's one in there about, about requiring home-based businesses, but it sets, it sets the state's parameters. We already have a home-based business zoning ordinance that works fine, but.
Well, I mean, and this is, this is what happens, is one place does something that somebody has a problem with, and they bring it to somebody who listens. And then we change the law because one place can't figure out home-based businesses, and it messes up with that, messes up everybody else's home-based business ordinance that's working perfectly fine.
Yep. So I don't know if, I don't know if our April meeting is due soon, actually.
No, I have to have this because we've already had a handful of bills go to hearing.
So maybe for the April meeting, we could take a vote?
Yeah, it's going to move really pretty quickly at this point. I mean, we're, we're expecting there might be a next set of bills up next week. And the reality is you only get forty-eight hours' notice. And this just starts, once these are introduced, it just, it moves at a pace that no, no, like, regular person can keep up with unless it's your full-time job. Or you're, like, you're retired and you have a bizarre hobby of, like, you know, following the General Assembly. But it just, it just moves way too fast for, I mean, the bills were introduced, and I think we had maybe three days before hearings started getting scheduled. Like, nobody can do that.
So what are you proposing for April first? Would we take a vote?
I'm proposing that if Ashley has a list of recommendations on particular bills that we would either, you know, feel strongly that they, they would not work here, or maybe even there are some that, I don't know, that might be wired towards that.
I think there are pieces that could be supported.
Like, this is a good idea, but I think we would discuss those, take a vote on them, send them to the council as our recommendation, that the council forward that to our state legislators. But I think we could also ask the council about permission to go to, you know, committee hearings and be able to be there in person, you know?
Okay, let's do it.
I think that's what we.
Everybody's agreed. Order out the agenda.
So I think we have sort of a plan, which leaves us with our only last agenda item tonight, which is we really want to perform, I don't want to manage to check this stuff out, which is to approve the minutes of February first and February fourth.
I, I make a motion to approve the minutes of February first and February fourth.
It's one at a time because I can't go around them.
I'll, I'll, I'll amend my motion to approve, approve over February first, two thousand and twenty-five. Do we have a second?
There's a motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing now, all in favor?
I make a motion to approve the February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five minutes.
March.
Is there a second?
March fourth, March fourth.
Oh, I'm sorry, March.
March fourth.
It's a type, it's a typographical error. March fourth, correct.
So I make a motion to approve the March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five minutes.
There's a motion to second. Any discussion?
February fourth.
James, I can't hear you. Sorry, can you speak up?
Page three, the next to the last paragraph. The last line says specifically what a maintenance plan. Specifically what a maintenance plan.
So, are we okay?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So I, James did just point out that on page three, the third paragraph, I'm sorry, the second to last paragraph, the last sentence, I think just has an extra word in there because the, the, it says specifically what a maintenance plan. I think it, we just need to say specifically a maintenance plan. Great, just to change that, okay.
Next paragraph, second line should be engineering.
Okay, so you know what? I thought we were going to do this. Do you have anything to say substantive change, Janice? Because otherwise, just mark them up and you can get them to the next one.
Well, wait a minute, I have one more. I have one more. I'll find it and I'll give it to you. I'll find it, and I'll give it to you.
Okay. If you want to just redline them or mark them with your pencil and give it to Ed, that's okay. Perfect. Okay. So Janice is going to give Ed a few, a couple of typographical things.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'm waiting. I just want you to adjourn before I ask the questions.
Okay, but our public, we were having a public hearing, it's all over.
Okay. I'll wait till next time.
So wait a second. We're way off here. The dates are right on the agenda. It was February 1st and February 4th. I'm like, those are the current dates, sorry.
Before we do that.
Okay, we're starting with the March. Who's responsible for that? All right, so we have, we have a comprehensive for February 4th.
Yes, but we have a motion and a second to approve with necessary objections. February 4th.
February the 4th. So there's, there's a motion and a second, other Janice's corrections that she's going to give to Ed. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? And there's one extension.
Two extensions, I'm just not present.
Oh, two extensions.
Two extensions.
Okay, so we approve the minutes. Rosemary?
Yes.
Your turn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn it. 9:42.
9:42.